Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand as our student board member leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Certainly. Mrs. Arminio. Mr. Braverman. Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mrs. DeMeo.
Here.
Mrs. Lang.
Here.
Mrs. Carino.
Here.
Mr. Ryback.
Yeah.
Mr. Russo.
Yeah.
Mr. Rutske.
Here.
And Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum this evening.
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted June 9th, 2017 at all schools, the Home News Tribune, the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the Municipality.
Thank you.
First on the agenda is approval of the minutes for this special public Board of Education meeting of March 29th, 2017. So moved by Mr. Chiarella, second by Mr. Ryback. Any additions or corrections?
I have... I have a cor... Which one are we looking at?
Twenty-ninth.
The March 29th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions or recusals? None? The closed session meeting of March 29th, 2017. So move Mr. Ryback?
Okay.
Mr. Chiarella. Additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions or recusals? The approval of the minutes for the public Board of Education meeting on April 26th, 2017.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella. Mr. Ryback. Again, additions or corrections to the minutes?
I have a correction.
Mr. DeMeo?
Page eight, under public forum. Christine Lester, the way this is written, it makes it sound like she wanted to have it changed, but she wanted to keep it... She did not want the changes.
Okay.
She wanted to keep policy 8505 as prior form.
Madam?
Yes.
Very well. We'll go through the audiotape again and just confirm that. If that's the case, then we'll make a correction in the minutes.
Any other additions or corrections? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals or abstentions? Then with the closed session meeting of April 26th, 2017. Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback. Any additions or corrections to the closed session minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And no abstentions or recusals. Okay, then we were going... We're going on to our presentations, and at this time, we will recognize our student athletes. So Dr. Kozak, Dr. Alvic, and Mr. Gorski, join us at the... In the front.
Yes, absolutely.
We will honor our student athletes.
Good evening. Oh, I'm sorry. Hello. I'm glad everyone's awake. Good evening, everyone. It gives me great pleasure to recognize our student... Our student athletic award winners. We, again, as I said, with the academics, we could probably recognize every student athlete in the high school, and I'm sure the middle school as well. But the board, you know, told me that the 22-hour board meetings wouldn't be a good thing, so we had to narrow it down. And with that, just like last year, we chose criteria to recognize those student athletes who achieved a county or statewide recognition. So we have three teams with us tonight, and I'm going to ask our athletic director, Mr. Byers, to give us an introduction. We'll be starting with the boys bowling. So, Mr. Byer, if you would.
We've had an unbelievable year this year, highlighted by our boys bowling team. We've had seven sectional championships in our school history. We had an eighth this year. It was the boys bowling team. So let's give them a big hand. On top of that, they went on and they won the actual Group III state championship, which is an unbelievable accomplishment, because they're only the third team in school history to actually win a state championship. So let's have a big hand for that. We will be presenting the boys team with rings for their state championship. We'll also be presenting Big Lou with his 300 bowling ring. In case you're not familiar with bowling, 300's a perfect game, and it happens very, very seldom, and he got it. So let's hear one for Big Lou. And at this time, what I'd like to do is call Coach Grimaldi up, and she's going to introduce each one of our athletes. By the way, Coach Grimaldi was GMC Conference Coach of the Year also.
I'm going to call the boys up one at a time. Joseph Holer. Tyler Cresson. Devon Maddox. Riley McKeernan. Riaz Mohammed. Zach Volkman, captain. Zach Weiner. And last but not least, the gentleman who will be getting two rings tonight, his state championship ring and his 300 ring for his January 31st, very first 300 game, Louis Fogory. Come with name.
Mr. Gorski's tall enough.
Stand next to Lou.
Mr. Byer's tall.
We did more than... Turn sideways. Turn sideways.
That includes the high school. I should do that policy.
You should.
I'm going to have to ask Mike. I don't ever like to check.
Yep. And next, we have our girls bowling team. So I don't get a lot of chances to drive up to Woodbridge to watch our bowling teams play, but this year, I got a big opportunity, and I'm shocked that the boys actually outdid the girls, because the girls had an unbelievable season. Number one, they went undefeated. You can clap about that. We moved up a division into the red division. We won the division title. You can clap about that. And then, in the conference championship, the county championships, they also won that. And it was just a fantastic accomplishment. So I'll call the Coach of the Year up again. And we'll introduce the young ladies.
Bridget Bolin. Ashley Borsuk. Nina Carey. Nicole Erman. Shannon Glenn. Alexa Hanath. Victoria Stasicki. And our captain could not be here tonight, but Sarah Wazekowski.
Girls lacrosse. At the beginning of the season, unfortunately, Coach Welsh couldn't be here for a family emergency, but she looked up in the gym, and we have banners all in our gym, and she goes, "You know what? The banner for girls lacrosse is blank." And I said, "Well, you got a big job this year, Coach. You're going to have to win the county championship." She says, "Don't throw that on me." And by the end of the season, our team became so fine-tuned that we went out against Olbridge, and we not only just beat them, but we beat them 15 to 8, which is pretty handily to the team that was the number-one seed in our conference. So it's a tremendous accomplishment that we get our first girls lacrosse county championship. And now we'll call up the young ladies. First, we have Allison Aiken. Teresa Buffalino. Leslie Lane. Leslie's a 100-point scorer. And Kendall Lamoro. Let's hear it for the girls lacrosse team. We'll get a team picture, photo, when we have the rest of the team together, okay? Okay, sure. Okay, sure.
Our second presentation is another group of distinguished individuals who also are part of a team or were part of a team, and that is that they were part of the Monroe team. And as I have the good fortune to interview candidates who come in, after the interview process, when I... If they make it to the final round, and I tell them that I'll be recommending them for approval, for board approval at the next board meeting, I always finish with, if the board should decide to accept them, that I welcome them to our team. So it's bittersweet that I call up the next group of people who are members of our team who have retired. And I don't know anybody that truly retires anymore. They go into a second career, it seems, or they go onto a hobby, or they go onto something else. They also... You can tell they're retired, because there's always a glow around them. There's a smile, there's a very relaxed glow about them. So with that, we're going to call up the number of retirees who were able to make the meeting tonight, and we have a number of other retirees who, for all different reasons, could not be here tonight. But for the people that are here, we'll be calling them up individually, and we will start with Barbara Dowell, who is our Director of Human Resources. Next, we have Dale Harris, one of our teachers of the handicap. Please come up. Next, I would like to introduce Mr. Kevin Fadden, one of our custodians. Okay. Looks like Mr. Fadden is not here. We will go to Diane Ostrowski, a teacher... One of our first-grade teachers from Oak Tree School. With Judy Bortachi, please come down, one of our paraprofessionals. Will Gloria Piatac, please come down, also one of our paraprofessionals. Next, we have Alyssa Sermon, one of our secretaries from Barclay Brook School. Susan Okalivich. Okalivich. And I took a lot of heat from my secretary, who said, "You have a Polish name. This is a Polish name. There should be absolutely no issues with pronunciation." And I did. I had to issue, so congratulations. Michelle Murphy, one of our Spanish teachers. Sharon Sellmeyer, please come down, a secretary from Mill Lake. We have Sharon Rusnick, our specialty teacher from our middle school. And last, but certainly not least, Cindy Wyler, a nurse... Our nurse from Mill Lake School.
So before we go to the next presentation on the agenda, I would just like to congratulate all of our retirees today. And as Dr. Kozak said, it really is a bittersweet night, and that's because while all of you want to leave, we want you to stay here, and we know that that's not fair of us to ask you. So whether you are an administrator, or a teacher, or a paraprofessional, or a nurse, you all have something in common, and that's you all took care of children and did the best you could for every kid in this district. So we'd like to thank you for your years of service to Monroe Township, and especially to our students. So thank you very much. So at this time, we will go to number three under Presentations, the new school building schematic drawings. And Mr. Teig, would you do the honors? Thank you.
This evening, we're going to have a presentation by Mr. Rich Alderiso, principal with the firm DI Group Architecture. You may recall that DI Group is the architect of the high school. The presentation that you will be seeing is in response to a directive from the Steering Committee. You may recall the Steering Committee was formed around a year ago to investigate and come up with a plan for how we should handle student growth. During that process, they evaluated data, primarily demographic reports and information from the township on the unprecedented growth that is being experienced here in Monroe. The conclusion and the recommendation from that committee to the board was that a referendum should be planned to build, to accommodate approximately 3,000 students. What you're going to see tonight is a follow-up to that. After that recommendation came in, Dr. Kozak made a recommendation to the full board that the plan to address the 3,000 students should come in the form of a new elementary school, K to 5, with approximately 1,000 students, a middle school, 6, 7, and 8, second middle school, that would also accommodate approximately 1,000 students, and finally, in addition to the high school here, again accommodating 3,000 students. That will accommodate growth for somewhere in the five-to-10-year range in this community. So with that information, Mr. Alderiso worked with administration, primarily with Dr. Alvic and Mr. Goodall, to determine the program that we have here in the district, what we refer to as the educational specification, to provide directive to the architect to ensure that the design would meet our educational specification and that all of the programs that we have would be accommodated through the design. And that is what Mr. Alderiso will be presenting to you tonight. At this time, we invite several of the board members, if they'd like to sit in the front row. There'll be a presentation with schematics on both screens back here. If you want to see easier, feel free to move out to the front. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rich Alderiso, DI Group Architecture.
Thanks very much, Jerry. Again, my name is Rich Alderiso from DI Group Architecture, and I'll start with the high school. Okay? Basically, what we're doing here is, as Jerry noted, we're creating additional capacity for about... noted, we're creating additional capacity for about 1,000 students. If you're familiar, and I'll try to use a pointer here, if you're familiar with the existing facility, which is all in light gray, all in light gray, we're proposing to add the dark gray footprint, or the brown footprint. And just to orient you, this is Schoolhouse Road at the bottom of the screen, Perrineville on the left side of the screen. Basically, what we're trying to do with this addition is a couple of things. Maximize the available site area, try to create additional efficiencies with this addition, taking cues from the existing building, and really trying to integrate any lessons learned from what we've done at this building in an attempt to create an efficient plan, one that works, and really to really try to create as small a footprint for this addition as we can. The smaller the footprint, really the more efficient this is, the less site improvement we need to make, the less we have to concern ourselves with storm water and drainage management, things like that. And I'll flip back and forth a bit. So this is really the first floor plan. Everything that is black and white in color is the existing plan, and anything that has been shaded or colored in is proposed, or new, or renovation to existing. Basically, what we're looking at is a 30-classroom, three-story addition, 30 general classrooms distributed over three floors, six science labs, which we are going to efficiently stack on one side of the building to try to take advantage of, again, the efficiency in running utilities from floor to floor. There will be four self-contained special ed rooms, three resource rooms, cafeteria, culinary arts, an auxiliary gym, locker rooms, storage, also adding band room storage, and making some modifications to existing space. And to just try to take you through the plan, and I'll use the pointer on the screen in the back, if that's okay. Basically, you enter currently from this side, the students enter from this side. And if I go back, here's the student drop-off is in this area, and they enter in the morning through this side, basically what we're trying to do is maintain that entrance. But again, since we're introducing an additional, we're planning for 1,000 more students, we're trying to make this a more open and more spacious area for entering the school, and also for giving, kind of an, as the school grows, it's always important to create an area to orient the students. So basically, we're making connections from corridor to corridor, and we're trying to create, again, a very efficient plan whereby we almost create a loop, so that we're not creating any long travel distances. And around the corridor loop, we have science labs, classrooms, the gymnasium, which is an auxiliary gym and locker rooms adjacent to the existing athletic area, okay, cafeteria, serving area, culinary arts, support space, and again, throughout the footprint on each plan, we have special ed rooms, resource rooms, and the like. We're also adding a band room down here off of the performance arts wing, and we will, within the space, at the distance, we'll be converting the distance learning lab into a professional development lab. And then also, at the space that you're in today, at the multipurpose, or the media center, excuse me, there's a great opportunity here to create some faculty flex space here, and regain some space that exists on the second and third floors for a growing need for the special education department. And I'll show you those as we go up to the next floor plan. So this is the first floor plan for the high school. This is the upper level floor plan. Currently, this is the classroom wing of the upper level floor plan. And again, we're trying to make connections here from corridor to corridor, to make this addition feel like it's always been here, and try to really make those connections seamless. Same thing on this floor, we surround this with classrooms, special ed spaces, science labs, two per floor, and several resource rooms. Third floor, very similar footprint. Again, we're trying to take advantage of what I call the stacking effect, where we kind of stack spaces, which again, which have utilities and plumbing over one another, so we're not creating long runs of electric runs and plumbing runs, things like that. And again, classrooms, classrooms, resource rooms, special ads, special ed spaces, and various support spaces. All told, this is about 123,000 square feet of addition, and I think it fits very nicely within the existing footprint of the building and on the site. Again, just to orient you, Perrineville, Schoolhouse Road, existing and proposed addition. And again, given how much space we're creating, I think it's a very compact plan, an efficient plan. Okay, so that is the proposed high school addition. I don't know, would you, should I field any questions, or go through each of them?
We'll go through all the whole thing, and then we'll ask questions by the board.
Sure. Okay, let me just open up, excuse me for one sec.
Michelle, you might have to, yeah, I can't hear you.
She said that the public can all see the back screen as I point to it. Would it be possible for the board to sit up front, so I could present on this screen?
Sure, we could do that. Just, you can use that, because we've, yeah.
Point to it, Rich. Just point, use that one, and then once in a while, come over and just let, you know, everybody's, you know, up here.
Alrighty.
Start with the one for the public.
Very good. Okay. So we're going to present a proposed middle school, proposed new construction, again, to accommodate in and around 1,000 students. In general, again, it's a 30-classroom building. We're looking at integrating six science labs with shared prep rooms, six special ed rooms, about nine resource rooms, three per grade. This is a six, seven, eight. Within the space, we also have, you know, performing arts space, gymnasium, cafeteria, and a three-story classroom wing. And I'll go through the plan, just to give you a sense of what we're trying to do here. So I'll do the best I can to point around the speaker here. Is there a loose mic?
Yes.
One more time. Okay, okay. So again, in keeping with what we were attempting to do with the high school addition, what we're always trying to do is, in the name of efficiency, trying to create as compact a plan as possible. In other words, try to take up as little footprint on any site that we can. It helps us with costs, with storm drainage, with any site-related, you know, regulatory agencies that we have to work with. And also, it makes a large school less challenging to travel through and to access for the students. So again, this footprint is the first floor, and it is, again, proposed for 1,000, to accommodate plus or minus 1,000 students. And just to take you through, basically, we have entry point, secured vestibule, main office area. This is a special services office suite. One of the things we're trying to do here is to, we're doing a ground-up building here to bring the special services back into the district, so space does not have to be leased outside of the district, and we have a great opportunity to do that here. This is kind of a central circulation spine. Once you enter off to the side is media center, performing arts here, we have band and vocal music. And then this is a athletic wing with locker rooms, auxiliary gym, main gym, cafeteria, kitchen, kind of a faculty flex space or workroom. And this is really right here, on the other side is a classroom wing, which would be a three-story classroom wing with several connecting corridors over to the one-story core space. Again, general classrooms, science labs, two per floor, which would be stacked, again, special ed rooms within, resource rooms, and support spaces. And the third, the second floor, very similar to the first floor classroom wing, classroom spaces, again, special ed spaces, science labs, small prep rooms for the science labs, and support spaces nested within, of course, elevator, toilet rooms, all of those types of support spaces. All told, this addition, or this building, is approximately, right now with this program, about 152,000 square feet.
At this time, the public, we'll have a public forum where you'll be able to speak later.
And that's the, that's really the middle school plan, footprint. I'll go to the proposed elementary school now. Okay, this is the proposed elementary school, again, looking to accommodate approximately 1,000 students. We're looking at the Apple Garth site for this project. So if you're familiar with the Apple Garth School, here's the existing Apple Garth building, Apple Garth Road. And we're looking to place the new building to this side of the site, maintain the Apple Garth School as an operational school while construction is going on here, complete the majority of construction, and then demolish the Apple Garth School and complete the site work and parking. Basically, this is designed right now as a K through five. It's a first-grade kindergarten wing, and a second grade through fifth grade wing right here. And these would be all the core spaces, main office, gymnasium, stage, cafeteria. We are creating separate areas for bus entrance and drop-off, and separate entrances for parent parking, faculty entrance and parking. And this, so this classroom wing basically consists right now of six kindergartens, seven first through third grade classrooms, and eight fourth and fifth grade classrooms. We also have six small group instruction rooms, six special ed spaces, OT, PT space, and all of the core facilities. So this would be the main entrance, this is a single-story wing here, where we have main office, child study, special services, nurses suite, media center, excuse me, gymnasium, cafeteria, stage, music. Along this wing, we have first grade on this side, kindergarten classrooms on this side, which open up into this enclosed, secured courtyard. In this wing here, we have second grade, third grade on the first floor, and fourth and fifth grade on the second floor. Again, trying to take advantage of the site here that exists. It's a really good piece of property, it's flat, it's, we have the right amount of space right where we need it on this property. And again, we're trying to create as compact and efficient a footprint for the elementary as we can here. Just trying to think what else. We could go with questions at this point. In any more detail, I could just talk about as I answer, any questions?
Okay, we will have questions from the members of the Board of Education, and if the public will hold their questions to the public forum after all the presentations, then you'll have an opportunity to ask any questions you have then. So is any questions, comments from the Board of Education? Ms. Arminio?
On the, I'd just like some acreage. How much acreage will you be taking from, I guess, the back of the building? How much does a footprint take?
In reference to this school?
To the high school, I'm going to go down the list.
It's, again, the footprint is about 50,000 to 60,000 square foot, so it's a little over an acre of building.
Okay, and you don't need to go beyond what the Board of Ed owns?
No, this all sits within the Board of Ed's property lines, well within.
And you mentioned detention basins and storm water management. Do we need to increase any of those at all on this property?
For this footprint, more than likely, we would need to add a detention basin.
Would.
And basically, you know, what we've done in the past is either put them under parking, instead of adding another physical basin, put them under a parking lot, or under a field, or within, you know, within another area of the site, so it's not a, not a visible site improvement.
If it's under parking, I mean, is that stable enough to hold all the cars? And I'm sure you're going to do all the proper engineering and everything, but has that been done before?
Yes, it's been done here.
We have underground?
There is one, yes.
And know that, okay. Underground parking, so it's not happening.
It's very common.
I mean, underground detention. The next one is on the middle school. How many acres do you require for that space?
Again, we're-
With everything, not just the footprint?
Footprint in the field, again, in trying to keep that plan as compact as possible. We'd like to, you know, be in the 20-acre, 20 to 30-acre range minimally.
Okay. And then, I guess, well, we have the property on Apple Garth, so we're just going to utilize what we have there.
For the Apple Garth School, yes.
I think that might be it. Thank you.
Mr. Ryback?
Not so much a question, just a point of clarification.
I guess mainly for the public that may not be aware at this point that it was mentioned in the middle school that we're gonna be having a suite for special ed. That's because special ed is now in a rental property, and so we're gonna be saving a lot of money by being able to bring them back into a school setting. I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryback. Also, so we have a special ed suite. We're showing one at the middle school and at the elementary school.
Anyone else from Mr. Russo?
Regarding the flexible space you mentioned, can you just give a little more information on that?
Sure. So, and we could, Jerry, if it's possible, to go back to the high school plan, I could, I could show a little bit more on that. So if you, you look at a space like this today, when the, when this building was designed, technology actually, in just those few years, has changed so much, and we require so much less space for media centers today. And what we're proposing to do is take a portion of the media center that we're in today, which is, which is right here, and dedicate that to flexible teachings, flexible space for teachers. It's basically taking the workrooms that exist on the second and third floor here, which is really the house faculty suites, and moving those down to part of this space and reclaiming those spaces for, for special ed. They're perfectly suited for special ed. Classroom, from the room sizes, there are toilet rooms there already, there are offices, there are smaller spaces. They're, they're prob, they serve, it'll serve special ed much better than they serve the house faculty. Right now, if you, if you go into those spaces with the house faculty, they're very small cubicles, they're very tight, storage is an issue. There's really no opportunity to, to, to have kind of a communal discussion about work or research or anything. Also, there are issues with, again, with storage and work areas. So we're considering taking a good portion of this space, using half of it for media center, and the other half for, again, that kind of a house faculty space. But again, it, it could be a much more, I think, much more efficient space than we currently have upstairs.
Mr. Chiarella?
And if you, if you, if you want to mine, I know the last time when we were at Buildings and Grounds, you, we talked about this space and how we would change that. And Dr. Kozak, at that time, had asked if there was a way to make it flexible enough so that when we have a, you know, a large turnout of the, from the public, that we could open it back up, or is that part of the new plan?
We haven't gotten that far with the planning, but there are certainly ways to use movable partitions to open these spaces up. We have, we have several movable partitions in this facility now, and it's, it's a, it's a very good option. They make very good quality partitions for sound. So if it, it's something we could certainly consider and talk about and continue to plan.
Just a follow-up.
Mr. Russo?
Just a follow-up. Is, is there any way that current space, office space, not classroom space, but office space, can be, because I noticed there were a lot of offices on different floors throughout the building. You have vice principals' offices, secretaries next to them, and maybe a meeting room and so on, and then there's other offices down the hallway. Can they be consolidated into a one larger, open space environment?
If, if they're not, if they're not connected, if they're not next to one another, it becomes challenging to find the best use for those spaces, aside from small group instruction or, or something like that. If, if we had a suite of those type spaces, there's certainly consideration for looking at how to use them in an alternative manner.
One thing that happened when this school was built, and it was expressed to me by the people who actually occupy the offices, is that they went a little too far in providing a large amount of space, more than what they needed. And what you find now is that that space is being taken from them little by little when it's needed. So it would be best to do it right from the beginning and cluster the operations people, that's the people that have offices, like the vice principal and other administrative people, into one area. They can have one on each floor, third floor, second floor, they would, because they, they say they have certain requirements. So we always looked at, where I worked, we went through this exercise, and we had requirements. So you had to, you had to defend your space, right? Make an argument why you need that space, and why you need that location, and then point out any physical requirements that you have and operational requirements that you have. And that allows the managers to take all the administrative staff in a given area and cluster them together, and they find out the work environment is actually much better.
So, again, with the teacher scenario, that's what we're trying to do in, in this area, rather than have teacher workrooms all over the place and things. We're really looking to consolidate.
And, and can it be done with existing offices? Or you would have to look into that, I guess?
We would, we would, because, again, in, in adding the 1,000 students, we really have to see how, we don't want any one space to be too far from, from the new footprint, because we're really starting to build out now, as compact as we're, we're trying to stay. I, I wanna make sure that we don't wind up with a cluster of offices, you know, a football field away from, from any one classroom or wing of the building.
Sure, sure. Okay, so you would have to look into it, but you haven't done that yet.
We haven't.
Ms. Arminio?
After the build-out in the high school, this proposed build-out, is there any other room or opportunity to build out of this again? In other words, if we continue to have the massive amount of enrollment, and we need in fi, in five years from now to 15 years from now, is that the end of, of the expansion on this particular site?
Tough to say. It's really tough to say. You, you can always add to a building, but if you had another 1,000-student spike in enrollment, that, that's gonna stay. Not sure if we, we couldn't get another addition this size onto this building after this one.
Right, right.
We can add small pieces here and there for, for certain needs, or we could, you know, again, we find ourselves repurposing spaces like this quite often to try to accommodate specific needs, but the, the big, the big volume of students, to try to put another, you know, 30 classroom wings somewhere on-site would be challenging.
So after this particular proposed expansion, what would be the capacity of the building, then, for students?
Slightly over 3,000.
Over 3,000. We're rapidly getting to that, to begin with. That was the problem here. By the time we opened it, it was already tight.
It happens quickly.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any more questions from members of the Board of Education? Mr. Russo?
Yeah, just on the cafeteria, there's a second one being built. What's, is there a reason for that? I guess, more students, but the existing one?
It's, it's capacity-driven, and also proximity. We, we came here one morning to, we came here a few times to observe circulation in the school. One, at one meeting here was at 7:00 in the morning to, to observe students coming into the school, and then we, we came through after one of the main lunch settings to watch students leaving and getting around, and it's really, circulation is really becoming challenging. So to, to try to continue on with another 1,000 students down at that end, it starts to, we observe some log jams at stairwells, things like that, which we really want to try to avoid. So it's this, aside from not having enough capacity in those spaces, it's another way of drawing students away from one, one part of the building to really help out with circulation.
Just one more. How do you decide what students will eat and what cafeterias? Just curious.
Dr. Alvich decides that for me.
In conjunction with Mr. Goodall. That would be a high school administration issue.
I'm sorry, one more, because I did write this down.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes. Cafeteria space has been, and thank you for bringing that up, because that's been the subject of some concern from parents in a lot of the different schools, so I hope that we actually put a lot of, you know, energy into the cafeteria spaces and how they work, because some of the children in the, in the Apple, in the Apple Garth School now are having a real hard time.
Middle school.
Middle school, I'm sorry. The middle school are having a hard time with cafeteria space and things. So we have to be cognizant of that. That's been a concern of parents, you know, for quite a while now.
And controlling capacity within those spaces is paramount to, to making it work.
And I think giving the children enough time to have their lunches, I think that's the big issue as well, not just the capacity, but, I mean, I guess that goes hand-in-hand with that. Once you, once you control the capacity, you can make it easier for them to have a decent lunchtime.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Albariso, and you might wanna stay for a few minutes, so if anybody has questions during public forum, you'll be able to answer them.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you. So, at this time, we will do presentation number four by the members of the Wellness Committee regarding Policy 85005, the Wellness Policy. Welcome to our meeting.
Well, thank you.
Do you need a light?
No, I'm, I'm good. I brought my glasses this evening. Last night, last time I met with the board, I forgot to bring my glasses, so this time I'm prepared. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Education members, Dr. Kozak, Dr. Alvich, and Michael Gorsky, members of the public, and colleagues, I see a lot. I am Nancy Mitresak. I am the coordinator for the Wellness Council. Just a little about the Wellness Council. Let me get this gadget going. The Wellness Council is a completely voluntary council. It's comprised of parents, teachers, school nurses. It consists of food service directors, athletic director, we have a physician, a, a, a physical education trainer, administrators, and students. These folks give their time outside of the school day, and they have one primary concern. They really are looking for the best interest of the students in terms of health and wellness. So all the folks on this are really, really seeking all the best for our kids. Just a little about the Wellness Council. We have a district wellness council, and it, the district wellness council focuses primarily on policy. It identifies gaps and locates resources to address them. It supports new and existing programs and, and related to health and wellness. At the school level, and we have in each school level, elementary, middle, and high school, a council. We have access to school health environment. We identify ways to strengthen and improve the health of students and staff, and one of the very exciting things is we plan Wellness Week. This year, we had a tremendous Wellness Week, and I do plan to meet with the board later at some point to really do the wellness assessment, which we'll be posting on our, our website, but we do have a very exciting program to share with you all the fun things that they did. The Wellness Policy elements, basically, we focus on nutrition education, nutrition policy, physical activity, all schools available, all foods available on campus. That encompasses school meals, competitive food and beverages, classroom celebrations, student incentives, rewards, fundraisers, other school board, school-based activities. Areas that we have identified in the Wellness Council, because we do look, where can we strengthen each year in our goal-setting? And one of the things is, we looked at, and this has been an ongoing topic for, I would say, since 2010, the classroom celebration, and it has not left our agenda since then. Dr. Kozak called me into his office and had shared that it has been coming up in his meetings, and consequently, I had shared with him that we have new regulations that are coming out, that the final regulations for school wellness actually came into be, they formulated them in July of, July of 2016. And at that point, one of the new additions was that school districts had to address school celebrations. They had to have something in their wellness policy about school celebrations. Prior to that, it was never a part of the school celebration. So Dr. Kozak tasked the Wellness Council with making a recommendation. We took this very seriously, and one of his recommendations was that we go and expand this to include the school principals, because certainly, they are the leaders in the building, and we did not want to exclude them in any way. So we, we went and we had a, we had several meetings, and they were very, very thoughtful meetings, where we contemplated this in a very serious, serious way. I will say before I, because I did skip a slide here, I am not a professional presenter. The Wellness Policy regulations are broken up into several categories. It's general program, wellness policy assessment, administrative review, public notification, goals, wellness leadership. Areas that we felt needed to be identified were wellness policy assessment and public notification. So that was another two items that we had on our list. So towards that end, when we, we had our key points, and the group unanimously, and we had 24 people working very hard, and really unanimously came up with, contemplated the celebrations, and it was a unanimous, at, at the end of the day, unanimously came up with that the recommendation was that there should be non-food celebrations, primarily, we were looking mostly at the elementary schools, because that's really where it happens. And for these reasons, number one, food allergies. In every aspect of our school community, we look at safety and the well-being of our students, and it is our primary concern. We are charged with the safety of our children, and we wanted to take this seriously and proactively. One in 13 students has a food allergy, and 40% of them experience a severe and life-threatening reaction. Secondly, we talked to teachers, and it was interesting, because we have teachers on our council, and they talked about the amount of class time that is spent dedicated to the birthday party. It is not just that, you know, the cupcakes come out. It is, we, we talked to them, and they said, on average, it is 20 to 30 minutes of class time. And they said, it's not just the, the food. It's usually, you know, it's multiple foods, and that it's goodie bags after the teacher has inspected them. Oftentimes, they're looking for paper plates, forks, napkins, whatever was, you know- Oftentimes, they're looking for paper plates, forks, napkins, whatever was, you know, not sent in. It's trips to deliver treats. So, there's actually a lot of time, academic time, that's committed to these activities. Lastly, we can't ignore the parent concerns. Many parents in this community have expressed concerns that they do not condone all of the additional snacks being given to their child without consent, and on such a regular basis. They do not feed their children all this sugar and snacks, food consumed, on a regular basis. The most compelling piece was a statement that was put out by our school nurses. It was a position statement, supporting non-food celebrations in our schools. I am not going to read it, but we are going to post this on our website. It was so compelling. Our council, after reading this, because this was all based in, in studies through journals of medical documentation, and it is really worth anybody in the community reading to really know the facts on why it's important that we really look at this on a serious basis. I'm not keeping up here. So, I'm not going to go through this, but what I'd like to do is just maybe show a few pictures, just to demonstrate what goes on every day. And we didn't, we just randomly, these were just, we just for a few days, took a couple pictures, just to put up here, to show you what goes on every day in the schools. I received the Dunkin' Donuts picture, and I actually wrote back, does Dunkin' Donuts deliver? Because it was so lined up and organized, but we know for a fact Dunkin' Donuts is not a nut-free establishment. You can see, there's a multiple of different foods. Now, any parent, you know, parents kind of want to follow suit with what's going on in the classroom, you know? They just, if, if, if the other parents are sending in several items, well, you know, then you're going to send in several items. You can notice in this photo as well, that there's the goodie bags, that the candies are being taken out of. Just a couple more pictures. I mean, I think you can get the drift. It's, these are multiple food items, this is what goes on every day. You know, 25 to 30 students in a class, you know, it's frequent. And a lot of, a lot of parents don't feed their kids this way, so there's, there's, you know, we spoke about, we can do this differently. I thought it would be interesting to collect some data. This is a slide that shows the overweight and obesity rates in our schools. I have no data for the high school, but this is what I have. And you can see that we fit within the norm for the nation. I think our nurses speak best to that, but it's somewhere about 30% nationwide. So, I'd like to say what this, these policy changes are and what they are not, because there's been a lot of misinformation. What they are, we feel very, very strongly that a birthday party is so important to a child, and we don't want to take away that joy. All elementary school students will be celebrated. We don't want to take away that joy. Teachers will develop a way to celebrate birthdays, holidays, rich traditions, bringing joy, enjoyment, using non-food celebrations. The new policy has flexibility. It allows the principal some discretion for following situations, provided that the food meets the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. What that means is that there are dietary guidelines attached to it, and they are healthful dietary guidelines. Incentives or rewards for students' accomplishments, club activity achievements, success in competitions with school-based activities, field days, all of those things will be allowable, but there'll be healthful snacks that they approve through the principal. What they are not, there are no changes to the current PTO fundraising, not at all. Food cannot be sold during the school day, and has not been able to be sold during the school day. It can, however, be sold on a half-day. And as has been, it does need to meet those dietary guidelines. This does not affect activities outside of the school day, so anything a half-hour after school, it does not affect that. And it is not taking away an elementary birthday celebration for each child that makes them feel special. I'd like to share with you just some of the communities in the area that already have taken this step. And they are local communities, and I will tell you, because districts are looking at this right here, right now, this list is going to grow by leaps and bounds. And we would like to add Monroe Township to this list. We think it's the right thing to do for kids. We think that kids adapt, and we also think that we can provide celebrations for kids in class without food that will be special for them. Finally, I'd like to say that we have the full endorsement of the school nurses unanimously. We have the full endorsement of the Wellness Council, the full endorsement unanimously from the principals, the administration team endorses it unanimously, and teachers overwhelmingly endorse the revisions to the policy. I'd like to take a moment. I have two colleagues here tonight representing the school nurses. And I just, for two minutes, I'd like to invite Mrs. Talaka up from Brookside School, just to say a few words from a nurse's perspective. She works in one of our elementary schools, and I am so grateful that she was willing to come tonight to speak.
Thank you. Good evening. As Nancy said, my name is Susan Talaka. I've been a school, a registered nurse in New Jersey for more years than I care to admit to, but I've been the nurse at Brookside for the past 13 years. I'd like to just give you a few fast facts, and maybe some better insight as to why the nurses feel strongly that this policy needs to be updated. For starters, the present food procedure that we have in, for student birthdays and class celebration, does not even come close to representing the current standards for best practice. Those are standards that are set by the powers that be, namely, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the National Association of School Nurses, and the Food, Allergy, and Asthma Association. Those are pretty important people who are very much on the front lines and have a lot of knowledge that most of us at this level don't have. So, in light of that, we feel strongly that the district needs to respond to this with the same diligence that it affords to academic standards. Student health and safety need to be our priority, and without compromise. As far as the safety aspect, food allergies have certainly become more common, more complex, and increasingly more life-threatening. The allergies are no longer just limited to peanuts and tree nuts. Currently, in our district, there are 634 students who have a diagnosed food allergy. Most of these students have physician action plans with orders for epinephrine. Furthermore, we know as nurses that in the population, 25% of allergic reactions that occur in our schools are seen in students without a previously diagnosed allergy. When you have the amount of food coming into our elementary classrooms that we see daily, you significantly increase the potential for these reactions to occur. There's also a clear contradiction in the fact that this school year alone, in order to comply with the state's universal delegate mandate, our district has invested time and dollars in procuring more EpiPens for each of our schools, and in training delegates. But yet, we are unwisely allowing huge quantities of food to be distributed in our classroom, usually without individual parents being aware of the day, the time, or the food that's being served to their child. The nurses have been clear that we no longer feel competent checking food labels, and hence, we will not do so. It is not up to us to decide what children of others should be eating. Recent labeling has become unclear, with ingredients listed that masquerade as allergens. For example, casein is milk, tahini is sesame, and these are both allergens with increasing incidence of anaphylactic reactions. The food manufacturers don't even want to be responsible for the allergies, as an increasing number of the labels coming into the school now have a global disclaimer that says, may contain other allergens due to shared production areas, which to us means it's not safe for anyone that has a food allergy. Also, there are an increased frequency of recall on food items for undisclosed allergens which may not, we may not receive notification of in a timely fashion in order to protect our students. The nurses are not in the classrooms every time food is being served, and at times, even the regular teacher, who knows the students, is out. This is very concerning, because if there was an allergy developing, no one's going to pick up on that change in that student early enough. And we all know that early intervention for an allergic reaction is the best prevention for a serious outcome. It's not possible for the nurses to keep up with all of this for the hundreds of students in our buildings. And for that reason, we feel strongly that parents need to be the ones to determine what their own children are eating, not the teacher, not the nurses, not any of the other school staff. As far as wellness position, while trying to focus on wellness and encouraging healthy food choices aim to address the rising student obesity rates, it seems kind of hypocritical to continue to offer this quantity and frequency of unhealthy eating in our classrooms. In all the other areas in the district, as Nancy had mentioned, the food is regulated by requirements for USDA standards that we must follow, and it begs the question as to why these endless classroom food celebrations are still taking place here in Monroe. From emotional, social standpoint, the nurses are concerned about the food practices as they now exist. We know of no other activity at the elementary level that creates more opportunities for students to feel left out. And it's not just about the food allergies. There are many students in our district who are strict vegetarian or vegans, whose parents refuse to have them eat sweets and treats all the time, who have family preferences for non-GMO, non-gluten, non-preservative, non-food diet, or people whose religious practices prevent them from eating food at all for certain times of the year. These students are left excluded, and it doesn't seem like it's the right thing to do. In conclusion, if anyone remains unconvinced that the wellness policy put forth by this committee is unnecessary, I ask you to consider the following. There are great many parents that have expressed how relieved they would be to have a non-food policy. The risk, the expense, the inconvenience, and conflict with their own family food choices are all factors. Many parents share the concerns of our teachers regarding how much interruption this creates in the classroom. We are here to educate, not host parties. You should consider also, from what I see on a regular basis, the students are less enthusiastic about these treats than their parents may expect. Often, the food sent in for a class party is returned to my freezer, goes to the faculty room, or is simply thrown out. If you go into a classroom during or immediately after a party, there's a lot of food on the floor and in the trash, and maybe some icing is eaten off a couple of the cupcakes, or a bite or two is taken out of a cookie. We have students going around the building, trying to get adults to take some of the food, because they don't want to bring it home on the bus, or mom specifically told them not to bring it back home. From the student standpoint, I really don't see that this is something that is going to be greatly missed. I think we will have other ways to recognize and celebrate that will interest the students and be inclusive equally to all of our students. Food is not a requirement for fun. Also, I would like to make this change, because student health and safety should be our main priority over all other factors when considering this policy. We need to bring the district food policy in line with current best practice by accepting the proposal that has been thoroughly researched by the Wellness Committee. Any compromise to establish best practice is really unacceptable, especially when it comes to health and safety. Change is difficult, but I have, I know that our students will do well with it, and I feel that it will be successful, as it has been in some of those districts listed up there for 10 years now. It is my hope that in September, parents will be making decisions for what their children consume, and all of our classroom celebrations will be non-food. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. And just one last endorsement. On behalf of the principals, Mr. Tony Pepe would like just to say a word, and we are...
Nancy, do you need the screen anymore?
No.
Because I can't see you.
Okay. I'm trying. Just a quick endorsement.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about the Wellness Council and the Wellness Policy. Obviously, there's a lot that's been said about this. Just to let you guys know, at the committee level, this evolved very organically. Everyone that is at the table has a different lens. So, a parent has the lens of their child, and maybe some of their child's friends. Teacher has the lens of their entire class, and some of the stuff that comes along with this. We have the lens of the entire building, and obviously, some have the lens of the entire district. So, all perspectives were kind of kicked around. One thing is for certain, we have a lot of parent support in this district. You know, you looked at the pictures that are included in the slideshow tonight. You look at it from a food perspective, but those are all parents that are looking to get involved and be a part of their child's classroom. So, that's to be commended, for sure. The other piece, in terms of the celebrations and birthdays and stuff like that, that is such, so vitally important to us as building administrators, to ensure that the kids have a celebratory, happy experience in school, you know, with or without food. And in this case, we do support towards a non-food celebratory policy. Some of the stuff that Mrs. Talaka so perfectly stated was stuff that evolved during the committee discussions. And the other side of this that I kind of wanted to feature here before I can close is the wellness side of things, and the health and wellness. I kind of think, on a personal level, it was a little ironic that at Brookside, we celebrated Wellness Week last week, where we featured healthy, healthy lifestyle, eating healthy, healthy choices, active, staying active and such. We had students track their healthy activities as an example of that. And now, this week, as we transition to the end-of-year parties, we have pounds and pounds of cupcakes coming in and things like that. So, which is great, and again, our priority is to make sure the kids have fun. But I, I kind of, being that we are the Wellness Council, and these are the type of issues that we do need to consider, it kind of seems like it is a little contradictory. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll open it up to the board, if you have any questions, or Nancy of the Wellness Committee, Mr. Chiarella.
I have a, I have a couple of questions, because I heard a lot about classroom time being impacted by having parties and celebrations, and then, we're still talking about having parties and celebrations, but just without cupcakes or without food. So, and you even made a comment that it's not, it wasn't, it's not the food that's causing the extra time, it's the celebrations themselves, but yet, we're still going to have the celebrations, just minus the food. So, my, you know, one of my questions is, why, why wouldn't the Wellness Committee just look to ban celebrations altogether? If we're going to, if we're looking to ban things and make sure everything is equal and not exclusive, why would we, why would, why wouldn't we just, just ban them? And the second question is, aren't we looking, shouldn't we also be looking at who we're excluding by saying, well, we're going to still have celebrations, but now you have to bring non-food items, which are more expensive? You're going to bring toys and things like that? So, now you have kids who can't afford it, who will not be able to celebrate their birthdays, because they can't afford to bring things in the other kids can bring in. So, I have, I have a, you know, I have issues with those things. I also think that, you know, as far as, I heard, I heard a lot of things, we have a lot of parents that are concerned because of GMO and, and those kind of things, and that's the kind of stuff that is, that is being brought into these classroom parties.
Sure.
Well, but I could tell you that I'm personally against refined, refined foods, processed foods, carbohydrates, simple carbohydrates, and sugar. So, maybe, you know, maybe my kids now will be excluded because... So maybe, you know, maybe my kids now will be excluded, because when they go to the lunchroom, those things are on the menu. So are we going to make sure that we're, you know, that we're satisfying everyone to the point where we're going to satisfy no one? I mean, I just want to make sure that we're being smart here. I just, I think either we should exclude it for everyone, or we should just leave it the way it is.
Excellent, excellent questions. We intend on providing a list and recommendations, suggestions for teachers, for principals, to come up with ideas for classroom celebrations. We do not intend to have full-scale parties in the classroom. So even though there's going to be a celebration, it is not going to be the 20-minute celebration. The kids can have fun. We had kicked around a lot of ideas during the meeting of things that they, that would make that child feel special for their birthday, that were fun, that were special, but we're not real-time consuming. We're not talking about full-on birthday parties in classrooms. You know, the full-on birthday party takes place at home. So, you know, I hope that I didn't misrepresent what, you know, the party would be like. It would be, you know, something more modified.
I have a question.
Mr. Mayo?
Shouldn't it be up to the teacher to set the parameters for the birthday parties?
You know, that is a good question, and we were going to empower teachers to come up with, I mean, that was one of our recommendations. What we intended to do at this stage was give principals, teachers, a toolbox. These are ideas. And to have teachers come up with a plan on how they are going to, you know, we weren't going to say, "This is how you have to do your birthday party," to empower them to come up and, you know, how they're going to have birthday parties.
I know, but my point is, they could have been doing this all along, thus controlling how their classroom time is spent. So if they're having these huge birthday parties, shouldn't it be up to the teacher to set the parameters within their classroom to say, "If you're sending something in for your kids, we're allotting 15 minutes, and this is what you're getting"? Why?
Mostly what has been reported, and I understand what you're saying, but mostly what happens, although they might send in a food product, it's the hitches. They forgot to send a knife, they have to go looking for a knife. They forgot to send plates, they have to go finding plates. They have to go find napkins. That is the kind of thing that expands the birthday party. That is what we're hearing, and that's the thing that takes the time. Sometimes there's, you know, goody bags that have to be passed out, sometimes goody bags have to be gone through. So it's dependent on, you know, case by case. You know, sometimes it's a simple, "The cupcakes came in, they got handed out, and that birthday party went, you know, 10 minutes," you know. But not every, every party is like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryback?
I have a couple of thoughts. First, Ms. Metrusak, I want to thank you for your work in our schools.
Thank you.
You do a fantastic job, you and your whole staff.
Thank you very much.
We all appreciate it. That being said, what we're looking at here seems to be a cultural shift, certainly for this country, if it's such a growing thing, and something that's, you know, a little difficult for many of us just to, you know, accept. I know my computer's being inundated with letters from parents, and I'm sure other board members as well, opposing this.
Sure.
I want to make sure that, you know, we get all our questions answered.
And I completely understand that.
Okay, and I have a few. Right now, are students able to buy snacks?
Yes, they are.
All right. Do those snack machines or whatever have sugared candies and things like that?
They don't have candy in them. They don't have anything.
And any sugared treats?
All of them are considered a smart snack, and there are, the USDA set out standards that have to be set to meet a specific regulation for snacks. They have calorie restrictions, they have sugar restrictions, and food service is not permitted to sell anything that is not a smart snack.
What about ice cream?
It's all low-fat ice cream or fat-free. So all of that is, you know, you can come and...
Yeah, well, small thing, I think that part of it, certainly, you know, concerned about health in general, obesity and all this, I know we sort of charted on that. We need to work with the homes, and I'm sure we do. But it seems to me that the onus is really on the home, more the home than the school. Ours is to educate and make people aware. We can't control what happens at home. It's still, the parent of the child has control, rightfully so, of that situation. And I think that that seems to be where most of it has to come from, not from us, but from the home. So I think we need to really look at how we're educating parents. Are we reaching out properly? Are we being successful in educating parents? As far as labeling of food, that seems to be a national problem, if companies are doing this, so that it could be confusing to anyone, even people at home.
Sure.
You know, we can't just think of the school. We certainly care about the safety and welfare of everybody, especially the children, because that's what we're here for. We're here for the kids. And that's the most important thing for us, and certainly what happens at ballgames or something, at snack shacks, anything, a kid can get an allergic reaction just about anywhere outside of the classroom or the cafeteria. So I think that, you know, maybe we need to look at what we're doing with the home, and I don't know what we're going to do nationally as far as putting pressure on companies to label using plain English, so to speak, because most of us don't understand what these chemical ingredients are.
Well, yeah, I mean, really, things are hidden, as Mrs. Talaka said. I mean, you really have to know how to read all these ingredients, and they are very hidden.
Two more things. One of the things that, I know a few of us had, on the board, had asked the Policy Committee to look at a compromise. I know myself, when this first came up, I was looking online and asking people outside of this district what they do. And quite a few districts, I mean, you listed districts here that are banning food, and I think Mr. Chiarella brought up a good point on that also. But that being said, couldn't we come with a compromise, to a compromise where we cluster birthdays, so that you have three or four celebrations across the year, so you don't have that many? And then I think we need to look at the parameters we put on parties, so that we, you know, it's controlled more, so that maybe parents are really aware of what's accepted, what has to be included, that maybe with a checklist or something like that, so that we know how long it will take, we won't allow more than so much time. I think, you know, part of school, and don't misinterpret what I'm saying, please, but kids have to have a little fun here also. It can't just be academics all day long. They need to have a little fun, they need to laugh, and certainly, a party teaches socialization skills, and I think that's important for all students to understand. So, you know, we can't take a look away from the importance of having a party, the importance of experiencing different foods, cultural experiences. I know we had, I was experienced that, and I can mention that later on, at a celebration by our Indian community, and it was wonderful to be exposed to that culture. And I think that that's a learning, a learning situation in itself. You know, it's a teachable moment. That's what I was looking to say. It's a teachable moment, and we have to take advantage of all this. So I think there's some things that we could look at, some things that we could do, and frankly, I was a little taken aback when I was understood that, you know, it was said before, that there is no compromise. I think that, you know, you have to look at opposing views. This is a community, you know, this isn't a dictatorship. This is a community. We represent a community, we represent the community. I think we need to understand the other side and take a look at the possibility of what can be done if you cluster birthday parties.
Sure. This was heard. I think Mrs. Talaka would like to answer this.
Sure.
Mr. Ryback, I just have a comment on one of your questions that may clarify something for you. At the school level, in the elementaries, what we had envisioned was, for the non-food celebration birthdays, was not necessarily a party or a substitute celebration that's taking more class time. We had envisioned some type of recognition for each child's birthday. That would include maybe two or three consistent things among all the elementary schools of the same grade level, so everyone's getting the same thing. And some of the ideas we had thought about was a morning announcement, recognizing their birthday, giving, you know, elementary level a treat, like you're the line leader for the day, or things of that nature, that don't take up instructional time, but everybody can participate in equally. The party aspect of it was three parties a year, which are typically the Halloween, the winter celebration, and the end-of-school party. They would be non-food parties, and we would allow an hour time, say, for those three parties, that each elementary school would have the same three parties, the same hour length of time, and we would work with the teachers at each grade level to come up with appropriate activities that would be fun, that everyone in that classroom could participate in, such as crafts, games, music, dancing, things like that. We feel that the children would enjoy that more than having a lot of food that's just getting thrown around, but also, again, it's something that is controlled, it's equal not only across the school, but across all of the district schools, and also accessible to everyone in that classroom. And I also want to make a point, someone had made an idea of having a quarterly-type birthday celebration. I kind of had an experience like that today. One of our grade levels decided that they were going to make today the un-birthday for all of the summer birthdays. I had an enormous amount of parents coming in with food, and what it ended up being, just in one classroom, to give you an example, four students brought in Italian ices, one student brought in ice cream cups, two students brought in cookies, and one student brought in cupcakes. So each of, each student in the class had four Italian ices, one ice cream cup, cookies, and cupcakes. That's unacceptable. So that would be what you're asking for, if you have a quarterly birthday?
Well, I have to say, I can understand what you're saying, but if we set up some parameters for these, for the, all the time and effort we put in, and sitting around talking, and, you know, and you certainly did a lot of time, put in a lot of time in this situation, so I'm asking you, do you think it's possible to set some parameters so that you don't get inundated with food like that?
After 13 years of doing this at this grade level, my answer would be emphatically no. And the reason is, we have tried, and we've tried to work with this on so many levels. We tried limiting what the choices are for people to bring in. We've tried getting people to bring things at certain times, and inevitably, we're blindsided by someone showing up at the school at 7:45 in the morning, wanting to drop off things for their child's birthday on their way to work, and then it creates a lot of confusion, because the teacher didn't know what was coming, maybe the teacher isn't in that day, and it just doesn't work, no matter how many ways we've tried to inform parents, that this is what we need to do to have some semblance of order, and again, safety. So my feeling is, no, it would not work. I could be wrong, but that's just from my experience.
Ms. Arminio?
Just to answer some of the board's questions, board members' questions, at the Policy Committee meeting, all of the questions that have just been asked, were also asked and discussed at the Policy Committee meeting. You know, half of us, I think it's safe to say, went in with the same concerns, compromise, changes, you know, allowing certain things. But the compelling reasons, in my personal opinion, that the Policy Committee understood are really important, and the sort of grave consequences if we don't do it. And I think, you know, judging from the studies and what people, what the professionals have said, I think we need to really consider it very seriously. It seems to be a well-thought-out policy. It is not a pleasant policy, clearly. And I want to thank all the parents in the audience, and all the parents who've sent emails, hoping that we don't pass this policy. I understand, and I agree with a lot of their arguments. I just think a more compelling argument is that we need to accept this wellness policy and move forward, and try to be more creative. And to think that each, I think it would be more disastrous for either a principal to be responsible, and we've seen it, if one principal in one school has a stricter policy than a principal in another, there's disturbances throughout the district. If one teacher, who has a strong constitution and is able to make those strict rules, I think then that person becomes the bad guy, or an unfair judgment against that student, against that teacher or a principal. So I think, and one of the things that I was hoping for during the policy was a consistency throughout the district, because more than, more than this policy, or not this policy, our parents would like consistency throughout the district. So, and again, I think there's a compelling health reason, we don't want to put children at risk, and yes, are there children who don't have these allergies that would, you know, maybe the first year or so be unhappy that they're not bringing cupcakes in, and gosh knows, I like a cupcake. I wish that wasn't the case. So I get the disappointment, both of parents and children, but, you know, a lot of times we say, "We have to, we have to listen to our teachers, we have to listen to our educators." I think this is a time, and especially, I'd like to thank the nurses, because they're at the front lines, and if something goes wrong, they're the first people, as well as the teachers, that will be responsible. So I think we have to, at this point, listen to our district professionals and pass this policy. Thank you.
Mrs. Lang?
My one, my big concern is that at, I have attended the three committee meetings where we really hashed this out and went over and asked for things and everything. And at our last meeting, Dr. Kozak asked for, and I wrote down, the last two lines of B-5 to be removed, that "Food used for instructional purposes should not be consumed with the exception of curriculum-based culinary arts, and if food's used for instructional purposes, it will be the responsibility of the teacher to ensure that no food is consumed." And I thought we had agreed that those two lines were going to come out, but they're not out. So I can't vote yes on the policy if it's not printed correctly.
Is that a present?
Yeah, Dr. Kozak?
Thank you, Ms. Lang, for pointing that out. There was, there were two lines, as Ms. Lang just referred to. One was that the, I have it in here, the, that the teachers would be responsible for ensuring that there was no food consumed, and I had made that suggestion at the committee meeting, as like Ms. Lang had just said, that we should take that out, because I didn't want to put that onus on the teachers, that if they use food for instructional purposes, that they would have to make sure that no one ate, like a marshmallow, and, you know, I just said, it might be better to take that off the teachers. The other part of that makes a lot of sense, that it should be removed as well, and it just came up today, and I agree with Ms. Lang, and that is the part about food being used for instructional purposes, that it, I believe that it says that it's not consumed.
Right.
And the argument with that was, there, I know at least one teacher used food, or uses food, for salt, sweet, things like that, and in that case, the students would have to consume the food. So if it was used for instructional purposes, and it fit the dietary guidelines, then that, in fact, that would make sense then, right, to take that sentence, are you saying "out"?
Yes, to take those two sentences out, because there are times where food is an important part of instruction. And there is also great use, on even the high school level, of using food to introduce, to teach cultures, and also to other different things. But there's also that case, like if we're putting it as strictly as that, there was recently a class trip, I believe it was the middle school, went to Dorney Park, and a student had not had lunch, breakfast before they left home, and they did not have lunch with them, they didn't bring their mail with them. And if you read what this says, if a teacher's not allowed to give a child food, then that's a real dilemma. So I think, I've said from the beginning, I think this is a very unclear policy. I don't think it explains things as well. It's not, in my opinion, a well-written policy, because I think that anybody should be able to pick it up and know what, where it stands from reading it. And I think that it doesn't communicate the fact...
it doesn't communicate the fact that we want to put an end to the birthday parties for the reasons that we are, and meet the children's wellness, but that the principal still has the option to do food rewards, pizza parties. And I just think that, not that we're, it's just, if we're going to be fair to the entire district, it should be clearly, it should be able to be read clearly by all the parents. And those two lines just really bother me, because I just think food, especially in like your preschool disabled classes, or in your early grades, when you're teaching those things, there's a time that you need to, a child has to taste a lime. You even get, you know, they put the litmus test in, I think it's chemistry, when you're in high school, you put it on your tongue. So are we going, you know?
Mrs. Lang?
Yeah.
We did, we did agree to that. I don't know why that is in there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So I want to, I don't know why you're looking at a copy that it's in there. I don't-
That's the copy that we were given.
Yeah, I think the one, the one sentence was removed, but it was the other sentence right above it that says, foods used for instructional purposes should not be consumed with the exception, it should be exception, of the curriculum-based culinary arts classes.
Okay.
I think the point would be that if food's used for instructional purposes, and it's appropriate, and I think the teacher can make that decision, that it would be, the food would be allowed to be consumed.
Right, sure, sure.
So that's a minor change. It might have been a-
Misunderstanding.
Misunderstanding when the policy was corrected. And I thank you, Ms. Lang, for pointing that out.
Yes, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I think conceptually, we did agree to all of that. And the other piece, it is in there, but it's in a different place where we talk about the principals. It is actually on the first page of the policy. If you were to go down a little, towards the bottom of it, there is a place, and I apologize, I don't have the policy in front of me.
Oh, see, okay.
But it does, it does state that. It just is not in that, that particular place. Mr. DeMeo?
I have to agree with Patty. The whole using food as manipulatives and not allowing kids to eat, I think really, because food can be a great teaching-
Sure.
And as a parent who had a son who was so picky, wouldn't try anything for me, but when he went to other people's houses, or when there was something going on at school, he was trying new things. And so that was something that was important to me, to have food in school. In addition, even though it says principals, this example, when the kids went to Dorney Park, and I've talked to people frequently, children go on class trips, their parents don't send them lunch. And it always shocked me, but Dorney Park was a 7:00 a.m. trip to 10 o'clock at night, and I spoke to another person who said, this child did not have any food. You can't rely on the principal at that point. The teacher needs to make a decision, and if we don't allow the teacher to have that power, then the teacher may not want to take that risk and let that kid go hungry until the dinnertime.
Right. We are not trying to affect that.
I know, but it's not clear through the policy that, because you give the principals the power, but you also need to give teachers the power.
Okay, that's, that's good feedback.
Okay, I think at this point, we probably discussed every, Mr. Ryback, did you have something quickly?
Very quickly.
Because we're on page three of a 90-page agenda.
Do you think, Madam President, might be possible, with all that's being said, to have this reworded and then brought back for a vote?
If there, it's on the agenda, so if somebody made a motion and second to send it back to policy, we can do that.
I would make a motion, rather than vote on this today and do anything at haste, make a motion that we send this policy back, back to the policy committee for rewording, and then for consideration at a future date, or the next board meeting, whenever it's ready.
Is any, okay. Any comments or questions on that motion? So we'll vote on the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Yes. Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kolopanovich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, it's unanimous. Policy will go back to committee.
Okay, Dr. Kozak, will we move letter L from your agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your comprehensive presentation. And we're going to work on this until we make sure that we get it right, all together. Thanks. Okay, so I think we have finished with all of our presentations, and we will go to our student board member report. But before we do that, we have a presentation for you, and if you'd like to come up and help. Do you want to come up? Yes.
Get the board out of here.
You don't get the board?
No.
Get the board to the table.
Someone's going to need to take-
Yeah.
Mr. Jamal, you're leaving us. Mr. Jamal, well, Dr. Kozak can hold this while I speak, because I have to read. Said has been with us for two years now, and you're leaving us to go on to bigger and better things. So Mr. Jamal has been a, he's been on the principals' list in the honor roll. He's been an AP scholar, a member of the computer club, the academic team, youth in government, National Honor Society, and National Science Honor Society. As I said, he's been a student board member for the past two years. He's a Muslim interscholastic tournament finalist, a COEDABLE camps instructor, an American Legion Jersey Boys State graduate, and he will, oh no, Rutgers University WIN Lab summer intern. And you will be attending Rutgers University SAS for computer science. And I know, just recently, we've had a student awards night, and you won some awards there. So congratulations. We wish you the best of luck, and we hope you come back and see us, and we will miss you.
So I'll keep this short, but the first thing I want to talk about is, this weekend, a select group of juniors are going to be going to the American Legion Boys and Girls State programs. They're a week-long program in civic engagement, and I went to the Boy State one last year, just as I was just mentioned, and I think it's really beneficial. And all the kids are going. I talked to some of them, and they're all really excited. Today marked the beginning of final exams in the high school. They're going to be going on until Monday, and then before we know it, on Wednesday, will be the graduation for seniors at the Sun Center in Trenton. And before I wrap up, I just wanted to thank all of the current and former board members for like the past two years, for making this position a really great learning experience for me. For anyone who knows me personally, I probably wouldn't have done this on my own, and it was mostly because Nick Tharni from last year kind of just talked me into it.
And we know Nicholas could talk you into anything, right?
He's really good at that. But I'm really happy he did, because it's helped me learn a lot, and not only learning about how things work, but also kind of shaping parts of my personality and my experiences in high school. And with all that being said, I think, whenever I think back to my years on high school, years in high school, my experiences here are always going to be some of the more positive and cherished memories I have. So thank you all for that.
And we know that you will be very successful, no matter what you do. So thank you again. Okay, I think we're up to committee reports now. So is there any committee that needs to report? Ms. DeMeo?
Yes. We had a very interesting curriculum meeting today. We went through a bunch of documents. We had the new lab biology and the honors biology documents. What's really interesting is that we are moving into real problem-solving in these classes, very unlike when I was in high school, and you just did a sequence of going through the steps. We did honors algebra II, and we did graphic design. It's, graphic design is a really popular class. We had over 200 students pick this as an alternate, and we have 136 students request graphic design as a class next year. We had an update on our academies. We have three academies, and, hold on, let me get my keys. Academies are very focused academic tracks. And we have a business and law and government academy, we have a communication and arts academy, and we have a STEM academy. And we've had 11 students apply for the business law and government. We didn't have enough for the communication and arts academy, but we're looking to change the way it was, the classes were picked or chosen, and to get a better, we invited 55 kids, we had three kids apply, so we need a little bit more for that. So we're reworking that, maybe next year we'll get enough to actually have the academy move forward. The STEM academy, we have 25 kids in that, and that's biomedical, pre-med, engineering, and information technology. And these academies have a very specific class schedule. They will be going on field trips related to the courses of study. They will have mentoring, and at the end of their junior or senior year, they will have a capstone project and/or an internship. So these are really, really exciting, what we're creating in our school. We also have a new teachers' program, the Tomorrow's Teacher Program, which is a program for students who want to become teachers. This is a program that's endorsed by the NJEA and the New Jersey DOE, and it's going to revamp our current working with kids program, and it will give students more in-classroom practice at the high school level. So that's really exciting. They will also receive college credits for some of the classes that they take. We've upgraded our pre-K report card. We recently upgraded our K-3 report card, and instead of just talking about, you know, work the kids are doing, it's a whole system evaluating other things, more socio-emotional learning-type stuff. We also have a, we are applying to do a language muse activity palette, and this is a pilot program, or it's a study by ETS, using a computer program that will help English language learners become more literate. And I really can't speak to the fineness, the specifics of this, but it sounded really interesting. And so we're applying to be a pilot with that. And the good news with that is, if we are part of the pilot, then at the end of the year, we'll have access to the computer programming either way. So we'll be able to use it in the year.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chiarella, did you, did you raise your hand?
I don't have a question. I just have a report.
I thought you did.
We had a Buildings, Crowds, and Transportation meeting on June 5th. Ours was much more exciting than Jill's.
What?
So at our meeting-
It was more exciting than my meeting?
Way.
I don't think so.
So we-
Absolutely not.
What we talked about, we went, we went over, what we really did was, we rehashed a lot of the things that we already had in the works, and we just got updates on a lot of the stuff. So some of the things that we were updated on were the roofing project and the millwork project at Barkley Brook, and also the paving project. So those, those are two different projects, actually three different projects. The painting is lead abatement in the cupola on the outside of the building. And so that's going to be taken, the lead's going to be removed, it's going to be repainted, and then the roof, the roof will be partially redone. Now, that's going to be timed to be done at the end of the year, and then the paving will be done after those things are done. So they're all, everything is scheduled to be, to just, to work one, you know, one right after the other until we're, until we're finished. So that was very exciting, as I said. And then we had Ingrid Rotano come in, who, of Pupil Transportation Solutions. So she's been, she's been helping us out catalog our old buses, our broken-down buses that are behind the middle school. We have roughly 10 of those that are pretty much gutted, old, and destroyed, because we've taken parts out of them to fix our new fleet. And just so everybody knows, you know, there are certain restrictions by the state where we can only use buses for a certain period of time, and then those buses have to be retired, and that's why they were behind the middle school. And then what happens is now, what Ingrid's going to do for us is facilitate the sale of those buses, so that we could get rid of them and make some money, and then put that money toward new buses, which is, which were budgeted for earlier in the year, and we had already talked about the purchase of those buses, and budgeted for those buses. We also talked about the food service replacement project for the, some of the food service, yeah, equipment and things like that. But I was going to ask you, Mr. Gorsky, if you wouldn't mind explaining some of that, because there were some, there were some parts of that that, where we went out to bid, and then we had to, you know, we're going to do some of that work ourselves, so I just wanted to clarify that through you.
Yes. Our food service program, under the directorship of Mrs. Ms. Frasack, has a unique problem. It provides the very finest quality of food ingredients to the students of this district, and we have the lowest lunch prices, or among the lowest lunch prices in the county. But yet, we've accumulated cash to the point where statutorily, it's approaching exceeding three months of average expenditures in the fund, which is prohibited by the Department of Education, to try to prohibit districts from overcharging lunches and creating a large cash surplus in the fund. Some projects that have been in the works for a while, but just haven't gotten through the budget process, are the replacement of a walk-in freezer at the Monroe Township Middle School, which is decades beyond its useful service and needs replacement. It's a very fragile freezer right now, and it could go and lead to spoilage and big problems there. And there's also some steamers and some other items that we're going to replace using that cash. And when we had gone out to bid the first time, we consolidated all of these food equipment items together as required, and we had no bidders. So now we're going to change the bid specs to hopefully attract bidders and procure those items using that excess cash as quickly as possible.
Thank you. I never would have been able to say any of that. The next thing that we discussed was the Mill Lake playground resurfacing using the Eric North Grant, and that's, that's proceeding, and that, you know, that was still a great grant, 30, if you want to-
And the beauty of that is, all of the playground resurfacing at Mill Lake is being done through a grant that was secured through the efforts of Mr. Take. So we're not spending any district funds on that project, and it will provide for a safer playground for students.
And then, the last thing that we had was, we had an update on the proposed land transfer on Church Road, and this is where it really gets exciting, so you might want to just pay attention. So right now, as we speak, and for the last couple of weeks, there are people camped out on that land in tents. I don't know what they're wearing, if they're in camouflage, but there are definitely tents there. And they're waiting to see turtles and catch turtles breeding and do all kinds of, all kinds of things. So we're, we'll get a report back later as to what they've seen. Maybe they'll capture some of that on video and really, really get us-
Then that'll be exciting.
Then that'll be really exciting. But, and that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
I don't know how anybody can follow that. Mr. Russo?
So Finance Committee, I sat in for Mr. Rutske, took the day off.
Thank you very much.
Well-deserved day off.
Appreciate it.
But first, I'd like to thank Mr. Jamal for being the student board president. I enjoyed all his presentations, and I want to wish him the best of luck at Ruttis. I do agree with you, Tharni has a way with people. He convinced me to run for the board, so, yeah, that's true. So the first item is the Individual, Individuals with Disability Act, I guess with some type of monitoring. So I'm just going to read the- So, I'm just gonna read the text as prepared. And Mr. Gorski furnished the committee with a consolidated monitoring report dated May 16, 2017, from the State of New Jersey Department of Education, Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance. The report presents the audit results of the IDEA basic and preschool grant, whereas a review of the expenditures, policies and business records charged to the IDEA grant did not yield any findings. And I guess that's a good thing. Negative findings, right? Yeah. So, the committee accepted the report and expressed their congratulations to all the administrators involved. That last line, I don't remember. I'm just joking. The next thing was food service audit and this is a very interesting one. Mr. Gorski presented a correspondence from the State of New Jersey Department of Agriculture, whereby the Division of Food and Nutrition, Nutrition's review of the district's audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2016 indicated that the net food service cash resources exceeded three months' average expenditures by $245,664.83. What do you think we'll do with that money? So, Mr. Gorski indicated that this is a fluctuating calculation and the committee accepted his plan to reduce the said excess by, we're gonna do these three things, replacing antiquated, fully depreciated equipment such as the walk-in freezer and steamers with new, with new ones, replacing other small equipment serving and cafeteria program and by more aggressively allocating district custodial services and energy costs to that program. Okay, now, we'll get into the lease purchased, this, I guess, is the buses, we discussed that. So, Mr. Gorski again, provided the committee with a resolution authorizing the acquisition of various vehicles and equipment and the financing thereof, which were all approved and contained within the 1718 budget. Mr. Gorski indicated that this lease purchase method of financing with its low interest rate, and you know, the rates just went up today, so you got it in on time, better matches cash expended for each asset with its estimated useful life. The committee unanimously recommended such to the full board. That's, that's true. And his audit update for June 2017 is gonna be tabled for a future meeting. And now, we go to the special services lease renewal and Mr. Gorski again, provided the committee with a resolution to renew the special services and central registration office lease along with the negotiated lease documents by our attorney. Suites A 101 and C 203 are recommended to be extended two years based on a 2% annual increase. The committee unanimously recommended such to the full board. He reminded the committee that there is a concrete plan to bring these functions back into the school, within the school referendum and we touched on that earlier in the presentation. So, that's that. The last one, oh, again, this is about the referendum. Interactive Dialogue. It's a company that was, could we say selected? Okay, so, Dr. Kozak was on this one and Mr. Gorski presented, as recommended by the steering committee, a contract with interactive dialogue. As presented to the steering committee, interactive dialogue will facilitate the district and bond referendum strategies for a successful marketing campaign for a fee of $20,000 after discounts. What type of discounts? Committee approved the proposal and recommended it to the full board and the next finance committee meeting will be scheduled for Monday, July 17. Mr. Ruski?
What time?
July 17 at 7:00 PM. So, make sure you're there. So, okay, and the only other bid that we got was $90,000 for this same contract. Was it 90? Okay. Okay, that concludes the finance...
Oh, thank you, Mr., thank you very much, Mr. Russo. Anyone else have a committee report? Oh, Mr. Minio.
I'm not gonna report tonight due to the time constraints, but I attended the state assembly for the New Jersey...
School boards?
School boards, thanks. New Jersey School Board, so I'll report on it next month.
Okay, thank you. So, we will go to, I think we're still on page three, the public forum. And so, anyone wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And as many of you knew, the, the public forum policy has been revised and adopted at the last meeting, so there will be a four-minute time limit, but there will be no stoppage of the clock.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Prakash Parap, 33 Dana Drive. I have, with respect to the construction of new schools, I have a few questions. Number one is, what is the cost? Number two is, do we plan to have solar panels for the new middle school, high schools, et cetera, in expansion as a source of alternate energy? Third is, do we plan to requirement to support STEM? Do we have technology lab, engineering lab? I heard about science lab. Like to have technology lab and engineering lab. Number, this is important, 1,000 students, 30 classrooms, so 33 students per class unacceptable. Maximum students should be 25 because the teachers had to give attention and the students. I think this is planned for 750 students expansion because 30 classes will efficiently hold 25 students. So, efficiency, good teaching and the students can grasp, so that is very important. So, we are spending money, please think over it, okay? And the middle and kindergarten, it is going to be a full day or half day. It is good to have full day, so we want to have an answer on that. And lastly, the sixth question is, middle school, we are going to have enough playground, okay? Thank you.
Okay, and I think Mr. Gorski can answer the cost questions and you can answer the technology and kindergarten.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Doctor. As far as the cost goes, we were planning on addressing this issue. If this was a referendum project like a five or $10 million addition to a school, I think the average referendum last year was about $10 million, it would be easy to work with the architect and come up with a cost estimate. This is a very complex project. It's two schools and in addition to the school, it's newly acquired land and just regarding the land alone, it's undetermined at this time how much work is going to be required to make that land suitable for a school. That's gonna be, need expertise from engineers and so on. So, we, the Board of Education has engaged in a professional engineering firm to come up with a cost estimate for this project because it goes beyond the sophistication of what we can provide administratively and we will provide that information thoroughly and completely as soon as it's available and along with that will be the tax impact that is projected to the community associated with the cost and the successful passing of the referendum. Madam, regarding the solar panels, STEM labs, the full day K and the Monroe Township Middle School playground, would it be okay if Mr. Alderiso addressed those?
Well, yeah. How about? I would like to add some before, Mr. Alderiso. I'm not gonna touch on the solar panels. You bring up a great point about engineering labs or engineering space. We're not in the, to the detailed area yet, but trust me on that, that is a very important area for me as well. And a lot of that can be accomplished with flexible learning spaces. It's different than a traditional lab where you need the exhaust fan and things like that, but we've already started adding more engineering in our middle school, certainly in our high school and that'll be a very big part of the design process. Also, the number of classrooms and this, Rich, you know, maybe could clarify, I believe it's 36 classrooms, so the average class size will not be 30. We're looking at a lower number. So, but that is a good point to check. We're building to the capacity where it may reach in five to 10 years. So, we wouldn't hit that, that number right away for 1,000 students. It would be over a period of time, but we certainly don't want to build schools. If we're building new, why build something where it's going to be, you know, crowded classrooms? So, it's a great point and we will certainly take that into consideration. The kindergarten, I think it's a little too early to determine full day, half day. There's a cost issue. I strongly believe, and I can't speak for the board because we really haven't discussed it, but I strongly believe in full day kindergarten as well. I think it's so, so needed and so important. Part of what we're looking at with the new elementary school is if that's gonna be where Applegarth is, Oak Tree is already K to three, we're building the kindergarten classrooms now so that in the event that we can add kindergarten, that the facility, the plumbing and everything else is already in place. What the grade configurations will be has not been determined, whether the new school placed on Applegarth would be in actuality a K to five or we would keep the sister school concept with Oak Tree and Applegarth, maybe a K to two, three to five or K to three, four to five. So, that hasn't been determined yet. We're, that's still coming up, but great questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's, okay.
Playground for middle school.
Okay.
Tim S O 2, Allison Court. First and foremost, want to congratulate all the student athletes tonight. It was a wonderful recognition the Board of Education gave them. Very nice.
Thank you.
And with that said, I'd like to know if possibly, we had a freshman baseball team this year that won the GMC tournament and we'd like to see if they could be recognized as well, as long with Coach Fields and volunteer coach Patagula. They win 16 and 3 this year, which was a feat in itself and I think we got some pretty, some great student athletes coming up through this program. I'd like to add as well that I appreciate this recognition being noticed by the Board of Education, okay, and that this, if you can, if it is all possible, you recognize the freshmen's GMC tournament win this year or championship this year, that it is not, has nothing to do with any parent organization, booster club or any kind of diamond club affiliation. This is strictly for our student athletes who had a great accomplishment this year in going 16 and 3 and winning GMC crown and if at all possible, you could recognize them.
Okay, we'll look at something for the, because our next meeting is in July.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Heather Corona and I'm at 225 Old Ford Road. Good evening. I'm here tonight to dispel the myths of the proposed wellness policy, which caused a knee-jerk reaction from the public when they became aware of it back in April. As time has gone on, I would have hoped that the board, as well as these individuals, have done their research as well as look at what our neighboring progressive districts have been successfully implementing for many years. And thank you to the Wellness Committee for the informative slideshow and moving our district in that right direction. One, this wellness policy does not limit parents' rights to choose what foods they feed their children. What you feed your family is a very personal decision and should be respected by others. This policy says it's not okay to feed other people's children. Parents are unaware of the sheer volume of junk food that we saw on the screen that is being distributed to our children every day without our consent. Eliminating collective food at holiday and birthday celebrations is the solution. Children can still gather as a community and eat the snack that their parents have provided for them that day. And this way, parents know what their children are eating during the school day. Their birthdays and holidays will still be recognized by a simple act of being a line leader, getting their bookmark and made to feel special. But the safety of our children with allergies and other health impairments is paramount and parents will know exactly what their child is consuming during the school day because they are only eating what we provided. Two, the wellness policy does not impact students with IEPs that have food needs considerations. As you know, IEPs are legal documents prepared with input from parents, school officials and even doctors, so this proposed policy has no effect on these children. Three, the wellness policy does not impact culinary arts classes. Students choose these courses and families are made aware of the curriculum. Four, this policy has no effect on PTO-sponsored snack sales or after-school events, again, because we as parents choose to send our children to those events. And those snack sale items already should be meeting district wellness guidelines. Five, this policy has no effect on school lunches because those meet local and nutrient standards. And once again, we as a parent have a choice whether or not we want our child to purchase that. I'm proud of the work and research that has been done to create this policy. The fact that it has 100% support from every building principal and 100% from every building nurse should speak volumes. It exemplifies that these individuals that work with our children closely, closer than anyone here, every single day should let you know that they see that parents need to choose what their kids are eating and what they feed their children. Mr. Iback, you said the Board of Education represents the people. We are the people. We are the parents. We are the teachers. We are the administrators. We have the nurses. The reason why there's no compromise is because it's not in the best interest of the children. You said parents need to have control and wellness starts at home. You take away that control when you let other parents feed my children. Again, cultural foods as learning experience, great, that could be an after-school activity that I can choose to take my child to. Mr. Chiarella, you stated that about goodie bags and having to spend money on that, but the policy states no goodie bags. Michelle, thank you for your support and understanding of the importance and if we're here talking about verbiage, let's work together to get that verbiage the way that the board would like it to be seen so that we can move a policy forward that's aiming to keep all children in our district safe, healthy and included. I don't think anyone can argue with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
My name is Tavon Tiladi. I'm at 4 Angelo Court. My question's around the schematic drawings that were presented to this evening and mostly around the timelines involved. So, is there a plan to have a referendum? Is there any idea when that referendum will come to a vote? If so, do we have an order for, I guess, the construction and which, what school's gonna break ground first and when that's gonna happen and the timelines regarding the construction? How long that's anticipated and the completion date from the time we break ground?
We do not have any of that information yet. At this time, we don't even have a formal referendum. It's still in the, in the stages of, we're looking for property, there is negotiations for property. Until we have that, we can't move forward on knowing exactly where we're putting every piece. We're at the schematic stage, which you just saw. They are not definitive. We can be adding and taking away from that. So, until the referendum process is complete, then we will have all that information. We need the cost, which we don't have yet.
My understanding was that the sites have all been established or set aside?
No.
Two of the three have then.
There's an addition to the high school and there, we were looking to put an elementary school on Applegarth property. The, the sites for the middle school is still in negotiation and at that time, at this time, we cannot speak to that.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Lester. I live at 261 Cranberry Half Acre Road. I'm in speaking in regard to the food policy. I understand and support the concerns the food committee has as I have a child with multiple congenital heart defects. He also has food allergies and restrictions and is frequently unable to eat because he was having esophagus. I've come up here before. With that said, what you are proposing is no way solving any of the concerns and therefore I'm against it. The born has not really provided any data showing that the obesity rates in our school have actually increased. If this was actually a concern, then removing all the unhealthy food that the school cafeterias are selling would be the first place you should start. That would have a larger and more immediate impact than a few parties a year or a food-based activity. I'm also in favor if we were gonna limit the birthday parties, but I'm just talk, like, I don't think that we need to do all that. These snacks are sugar-based, high-calorie foods and have some known allergens. In fact, when my child has issues due to food, it has always occurred in the lunchroom, most notably due to the snacks you are selling. Never has anything occurred in the classroom from a teaching activity or a party. As I recall, someone asked the board recently if there were any reports from the nurses that a party or activity resulted in allergic reaction. To date, there have been none. The only reports I heard were in the higher grades where a peer had given, you know, shared food. I would like our teachers to have control over their own classrooms, let the children learn to self-advocate. They can alter things as needed, so if Star of the Week always brings a cupcake, maybe they bring a favorite coloring page. And again, for the birthday parties, too, it doesn't have to be a food-based. And again, for the birthday parties, too, it doesn't have to be a food-based activity. In the presentation, they said there's a lot of time wasted. I think there's more time wasted watching movies in the middle school and in the classrooms where they'll watch movies for a week. Also, if this is actually about obesity rates and the poor pacer testing, then remove the sugary junk food that you sell and expose the children to daily. Allow the kids more time at recess rather than using that time to eat the junk. Limit homework to a few days a week, or follow district's lead by eliminating homework altogether. Something like this would have an enormous impact on the health of our kids. This will allow them to actually play outside, participate in sports versus doing homework till bedtime. We personally have opted out of sports because we have too much homework. We are promoting healthy living and telling kids to get up and move and eat healthy while selling them appetizers for lunch followed by ice cream or Cheerios five days a week. So if I send my child with $2 for lunch, they can buy ice cream. They don't have to buy lunch. Do you realize that the district loses all credibility while these foods are pushed on the kids for profit? How can you encourage children to be healthy and be a good role model? We do this as parents by providing healthy food and teaching moderation. I don't tell my kids that they have five minutes to eat lunch on the weekends, and then after they have a few bites, tell them to toss it out. We're going to have snack. We don't offer ice cream or dessert for eating a bite of their lunch. You don't let their, your children pet, like, throw out their whole dinner plate to have that cookie. We have to lead by example. That includes that the district handles things. Teach them to keep trying activities. Allow them to see what is a good fit for, as far as sports go. Provide them healthy food and the social aspect of breaking bread with their peers. This has been very important to my child. Feed them something other than appetizers for lunch. Breadsticks and mozzarella sticks are not, it's not lunch. And make sure that the cafeteria doesn't run out of fruit. Every lunch period should be able to have the ability to grab an apple or a pear, not just the first lunch period. By eliminating snacks sold, the kids would have time to eat their lunch first and finish their food instead of tossing it to eat chips. Basic hunger would encourage them to actually eat. I would also suggest that our kids are able to eat lunch daily, and our children are not shamed over overdue accounts or lack of money. Yesterday, a child at the middle school was not allowed to have lunch because it was the end of the year and they didn't want to have a balance. So that's not an excuse. Instead, she went hungry while other children tossed out full trays of food. I just would like you to consider this.
Thank you. Do you want to respond to that?
Yes. With regard to the middle school incident, that was reported to me today, and I spoke to Nancy Mitresak, Food Service Director, who interviewed everybody who works in the middle school cafeteria. And the fact that a student went hungry and was not provided a lunch, it could not be determined at all. In fact, the policy and procedure that we have in place is that if a child doesn't have enough credit on their school-child nutrition account that's funded online by the parent, then they are provided with a traditional Type A lunch, a reimbursable lunch it is called, and their account goes into the deficit. The parent has then written a letter, but on no circumstances here have we ever, to my knowledge, sent a kid away hungry from lunch because they didn't have money or shamed them in any way.
Right. And that's when I wrote to the Board, I said that I don't know if it was explained to her that she could have a cheese sandwich or that, you know, we can call a parent or anything like that. I'm not sure that, but I do know that she had animal crackers that she obtained from my child, and then she went back to class hungry. So it's just, it was just something I wanted to bring up to the Board. But again, I'm not opposed to, like, implementing some kind of food policy.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Jessica Isom at twenty-one Oliver Street. I just felt compelled to expand upon the extravagant amount of food celebrations in school. My kids, they don't have allergies or any health issues, and I just try to bet my best to feed them a healthy, balanced diet while also allowing a healthy amount of indulgences. With health, consistency is key, and unfortunately, this school year has been downright disrespectful to my efforts for stability in nutrition. During the brief two and a half hours my child's at school, she regularly downs more added sugar than the recommended daily maximum for an adult, and this is all before lunch. This is directly because of the extra sweets she's given at school. There is a flyer that comes home in the beginning of the school year encouraging healthy snacks, so I was under the impression that Monroe was a health-conscious school district. I do my part, and I sent her in with healthy food. Why is the school allowing her, other people to feed her junk food and as often as they are? Sure, it was annoying when my daughter would come home from school and skip lunch because she had a stomach ache, lamenting that she shouldn't have eaten all the extra treats, but it quickly became infuriating when the sheer volume of celebration days revolving around the extra treats became apparent to me. The last time I spoke here in April, there were four days out of that week where extra desserts were handed out. That's four out of five consecutive days my daughter basically had sugar for lunch, and she had stomach aches for two of those days because of this. And I'm sad to report that nothing has changed. This week is turning, isn't turning out to be much different. In keeping with the excessiveness, kindergarten has two end-of-the-year celebrations. They had one bountiful celebration on Friday, and tomorrow they're having another one that, again, revolves around more snacks. And this is all on top of all the summer birthday kids who get their own special day to bring in a celebratory snack. I don't even know how many there are going to be this week. And all of this is crammed into the last few weeks of school. The school's sending a message that we celebrate everything with junk food, and this blatantly contradicts the current AAP recommendations to promote healthy ways to celebrate. It also diminishes the meaning of a celebration by habitually celebrating. Life's not one big party, and we don't need junk food to help kids learn. Let's make it healthy. It's not too late to change our outdated and frankly embarrassing school culture. According to Dr. Claire McCarthy, spokesperson for the American Academy of Pediatrics, banning sweets at parties or for rewards forces people to think of healthy ways to celebrate. It also forces people to stop and think about what they're doing and how it might impact students. It makes a statement about how the school values students' health and helps create a school culture of healthy eating. Let that be our new culture. Cupcakes don't make or break the party. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I was going to read my notes, but I think I'm going to go back and forth. Just give me one second. Okay, Corinne Masters, and I'm Michaela Court. I just want to say we had our kindergarten tea at Oak Tree today, and we did not have junk food. We had mini bagels for our celebration that the PTA sponsored, which to me would be fine to have, and I don't think a food policy should, you know, impact that. I will also say that my kindergartner made this lovely book for me today, and as you can see, we have pictures of our Thanksgiving feast, which I still think should be included, and due to the current policy, would not be. Also, it's a picture of my children, my son, and my husband and I having his gingerbread house that we did in December. With the food policy that's before you this evening, that would not be allowed, which, again, would make this book very sad to the next set of parents who have kindergartners still to come up. I'd also like to add that both Oak Tree and Applegarth have gardens, and the thought that the children wouldn't be able to eat what they grow is very sad. Yesterday, my son brought home two onion plants that he grew. He named them Stinky and Scramble. He was so excited today because he was able to give them to my husband for his birthday today. If he wasn't able to grow these and to try these onions, he would be lost. So it's very sad. We had Healthy Living Night last week at Oak Tree. Mrs. Dinsmore, along with some of the teachers and the staff, I helped them raise money, and they ate crickets in order to buy fruit trees so we can start an orchard there. Well, if the children can't eat the fruit that the orchard grows, it's kind of pointless. I was actually on the middle school trip to Donnie Park, standing next to the faculty member when the child came over and said she had no food and that she hadn't eaten from the night before. It was a sixteen-hour trip. We weren't getting our dinner meal tickets till after the award ceremony, which is approximately 6:00 PM. The thought that this faculty member would be in trouble for giving a child half for lunch, you know, concerns me because I wouldn't want that faculty member to be reprimanded, and I don't want to see a child go not eating dinner the night before till not eating, you know, dinner the next night at 6:00 PM. Also, the Wellness Committee doesn't really address at all mental health, and that's a huge portion of this. As I'm on the Applegarth and the Oak Tree Wellness Committee, and it was trying to be addressed both those places, but yet the district-wide committee hasn't addressed it at all. If that's really a concern, maybe then we should increase the time of physical activity. We want to be more like Wes Windsor. That was one of the examples. Yet Wes Windsor has no homework policy days. Maybe we should institute something similar to that. Also, maybe the Board members would like to look at some of the menus in the elementary school. I work school store twice a month in Oak Tree and Applegarth. I can tell you, there's funnel cakes, and I know they meet all the guidelines. There's baked Doritos, there's baked las, it's a hundred and eighty days my, that my sons can buy baked Doritos, ice cream, whatever they like. That doesn't necessarily go in our home, but if he has money on his lunch account, they know they can do it. And unless I put a lock on his account, then they can't. And then sometimes they get a friend to buy it for them, so it doesn't always work. Also, I wonder if the slideshow that you just showed this evening will be online, because I couldn't copy down some of the information fast enough. Will you be able to put that slideshow online? Great. Let's see what else. And then as far as, like, wasting time with movies and things in the middle school during park, I mean, we have so much downtime during park, we could use that for maybe some mental health, you know, days and minutes and do breaks during, teach the kids yoga, do something more constructive. I didn't think I was going to go. Let's see what else I have on here. I think I've got them good for tonight. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And I appreciate taking time to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening, Doug Poehl. I live at Fort Tamarack Road. First of all, I'd like to commend the Board for having provided time for the schematics of the anticipated buildings, sharing that with the public. I think that was a very wise view to do, to try to get that information out to the public as soon as possible, with the understanding that there will be a lot of changes in that. But at any rate, you're beginning to get the information out so the public becomes more aware of what's taking place. There was a comment made by one member of the Board that I wanted to bring up, and I bring it up in the context that a school environment is quite different from a corporate environment, and particularly in a high school. I do not think that it would be wise at all to concentrate all the administrative staff in one section of the building. For purposes of both emergencies and safety, you need those vice principals deployed throughout the building and not all clustered together in one part of the building. I've seen the mistakes that some schools make when they've done that, and I've seen schools that operate much better when that administrative staff is scattered around the building. They're more accessible to the teachers, they're more accessible to a classroom in the event that a fight, excuse me, should break out. So I think by deploying that administrative staff around the building, you have a much safer situation for the students and the staff. I also would like to commend the Board for attempting to establish a policy dealing with wellness. It's timely. I know it's not an easy task because you have those who want things to go along as they always have been, and so you're having to listen to all those competing interests, but I think it's a good thing to do. I also was listening very carefully about the wellness program, and I do believe that it's very, very important, and I did discuss this with a prior superintendent some time ago. We have students that their wellness needs deal with their mental health, and more needs to be done, more needs to be available to students from the very small, from the very young grades all the way through high school that are not necessarily with an IEP, but definitely have some mental health issues that might be not being addressed. And in my opinion, those are the people that, once they become adults, they create the problems in our society because they have not been properly treated and had their anxieties and their difficulties dealt with. So I thank you for your attention, and I commend you once again on giving those schematics, and I hope that future Board meetings will, you will continue to share that information about the potential referendum that the community will be facing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poehl. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Good evening. Chrissy Skirby, twenty-one Preakness Drive. In regards to the schematics that we saw tonight, very excited to see the new middle school. However, I was a little surprised that it would only be housing a thousand students. The current middle school right now was built to house twelve hundred students. That would only leave us with twenty-two hundred students. Currently, there's over seventeen hundred students in the middle school. I think we really need to look at the demographic studies very closely to see what, how many students we do anticipate, because the numbers are growing, and we have three huge developments going up, condos and townhouses. So I really think that, you know, you have to look at the demographic study very closely to see if that building is going to be big enough, or if we're going to open and we're going to be at capacity on day one, like we've been in this building and Oak Tree. Also, in the interim, I know that we talked about it at the District Education Council meeting last week. I know there are plans for trailers, not this school year, but the following school year at the middle school. I think it's very important for this Board to ensure that there's going to be water facilities, water run out to those trailers. It would leave the students and the teachers and the administration really at a disadvantage if there's not water to those trailers. You would have students that would need to be coming back and forth into the building and into the trailers to use the bathroom facilities. So that's going to be something really important for this Board to ensure that the students are going to have the proper bathroom facilities in those trailers. And then just in regards to the food policy, I have to say, I was the PTA president over at Oak Tree School for seven years, and I, some of what was said tonight that goes on simply, I never saw. I never saw hordes of food, multiple cupcakes and candy and everything being given out. The parents who ran the parties were room parents. We weren't, you know, I was always a room parent in our room. We made sure we made healthy choices. There's a lot of fruit brought in. As Mrs. Masters said, the kindergarten tea has bagels. That's been a tradition for our kindergartners at the celebration. To see something like that go away truly would be sad. Maybe you, maybe you can listen to what some of the parents were talking about and compromise. If you want to take away sweet treats for birthdays, come up with maybe a list of foods that you would be okay with, fruit, vegetables. But to say we're taking away all food out of the schools completely, that's, that's a little ridiculous. I just, I think the Board really needs to take a look at everything. I heard, I haven't read the entire policy. I heard it referred to that staff would not be allowed to provide food. I think that would, you have to really look at that, too, because if you're having snack sales on a half a day that's going to be allowed, there are children in the elementary school that come and they forget their money, and I've seen it time and time again. We ran those pretzel sales all the time at Oak Tree, and children would get upset, and either the parent in the room or the teacher would take a dollar out of their pocket and say, here, just, you know, you can buy one, two, you know, we don't want, we feel bad for you, you left your money on the bus, or your mom forgot to send the money. You need to look at that, too, in the policy. If a teacher's not going to be allowed to do that anymore, you know, that's, that's very strict, and that's going to be very concerning, I think, for parents, and you don't want to put the staff members in that position of children being upset, or, you know, that's going to cause another whole issue. So I just really think that you really need to go back and look at exactly how this policy's going to affect everybody across the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the agenda? Seeing no one? Dr. Kozak, would you like to do a superintendent report?
Thank you, Madam President. There, before I ask for the Board's approval of the recommended, I mean, of the items on the personnel agenda, I would just like to bring up a couple points. Mr. Ryback will probably bring this up about our attendance at the Teacher Appreciation Day, but I, too, wanted to say it was a very nice event, presented to our elementary teachers in particular by members of our Indian, Asian Indian, or American Indian population. It was very nice. Student performances, there was food representing the certain, you know, Indian culture. It was very good. And Mrs. Dinsmore and Mr. Mantrilla were there, as well as a number of our teachers, middle school and elementary teachers, and it was a very nice event held last Sunday. On the Personnel section, I just want to bring to your attention Letter AJ is Mr. William Jacatop as the new Assistant Principal for the middle school being recommended. He has demonstrated, gone through numerous interviews with the middle school administration, as well as two interviews with me and Dr. Albeck, and he has demonstrated excellent leadership abilities. He responded well to the interviews, writing samples, everything that we asked of him. So he is on the agenda, listed under AJ. Letters AZ through DD refer to our Summer Enrichment Program for incoming ninth graders. This is all title-funded, and it really is helping our transition for our eighth graders to ninth graders. This, some, you know, in some ways, came out of a conversation last year. Dr. Higgins at the middle school, we were talking about helping ninth graders who were struggling academically. struggling academically, and we used the title money last year, putting after-school program in place, and then this year, using that to help these students before they even enter into the high school, both coming from Jamesburg and our Monroe Township Middle School, for those students who demonstrate a need. So I think that's, I'm really excited about this, and seeing that the students have this opportunity to get that kind of extra help before they even start the school year. And with that, due to the length of everything else, I will conclude that part and then ask for the board's approval for items A through CJ.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella?
We're waiting. No, J, I believe it is, right?
CJ.
CJ.
CJ. Who seconded that? Did anybody second it? Mr. De Mayo? Any comments or questions for Dr. Kozak? Ms. Arminio?
I think I just need a clarification on the, I think in here, there was, it's an Assistant Principal, and then there was a Vice Principal. What's the difference?
Ah, it's just a wording change. It's whatever our job title is. I use the Assistant or Vice Principal interchangeably. I don't see any difference between the two, but the correct one would be whatever our job title would, which, I think it's Assistant. It's Assistant. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Then we'll have a roll call.
Thank you. Personnel items A through CJ. Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes, recuse on Dempsey, Nay Cash, and Fonseca.
Thank you. Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke?
Yes.
And Mrs. Koloponovich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, personnel items A through CJ has passed.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I recommend to the board approval of items A through S under Board Action.
So moved.
Second.
With the exception of L.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I got it from both sides. Thank you with the, no, no, please, thank you. With the exception of L, which is the policy.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback, again, comments or questions?
I wrote all the stuff down. I forgot to.
Seeing none, we'll have roll call.
Board Action items A through S without L. Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke?
So I abstain with the exception of items F, G, H, and then O, P, Q, where I vote yes.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Koloponovich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action items A through S with the exception of L has passed.
Thank you. And Dr. Kozak, I think you have.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just one quick announcement. This board has been very active in trying to secure additional state funding, and I was very, very happy tonight, during our curriculum committee, I got a text from a superintendent who is one of about, oh, I don't know, about 20 superintendents from around the state that I've been working with, collaborating with, and each of their districts are working to secure more state funding as well, that there was an announcement from Senator Sweeney and Assembly President Pieto that they have come up with a plan to provide additional funding for underfunded school districts. And I believe the wording will, is, part of the wording is specifically addresses the needs that the Monroe Township School District has. Understand, this is only a plan, there's supposed to be a press release tomorrow, and I hope, Mr. Chiarella, I hope I didn't steal your thunder on that one.
No, no, that's okay.
I did.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I have plenty more thunder.
But I thought that was exciting, considering the amount of work that this board has been spending on this, and so many individuals over a number of years. It was really something exciting to get that text tonight, to see that maybe, maybe there will finally be some movement, and this district will receive some more state aid. So thank you.
That would be great. That would be great. Thank you. So at this time, we'll go to the Business Administrator's Report.
Thank you. I shared Dr. Kozak's sentiments greatly. Mr. Chiarella's going to speak about this during other board business, and this, it's going to be with a lot of excitement, I hope, because this is going to have a significant impact on, immediately on Monroe's aid formula, as well as the long-term prospects of the development of a new funding formula. Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action items A through M, M, be approved by consent. Roll call.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Chiarella, Mr. De Mayo, any comments or questions for Mr. Gorsky? Or Arminio?
Yes, Mr. Gorsky, on Board Action, oh, we're not on the professional appointments part yet, right?
It's all one report.
Okay. Then, under A, Professional Appointments, item four, it talked about a savings, but can you tell us what the actual cost of the Energy for America Incorporated will be? That's item four.
Yes.
Okay.
I looked, I looked at this last year, and Energy for America is a contracted professional firm that the district has engaged for many years. They provide very sophisticated green technology to the district. For example, they regulate all of the temperatures in the classrooms in the schools, including this room. When there's no one in the room, they moderate the heater, air conditioning down to a minimal level to save money, and it's all very scientifically approached. Likewise, they shut off the electricity during certain times. And I asked Energy for America for a report about a year or two ago, the maximum, on how much money they believe they've saved. And they gave me back a very lengthy report that goes into kilowatts per hour and thermal units of natural gas and whatever, but the amount of money that was saved at that time was in excess of a half a million dollars a year off of the energy bill. And that leaves a lot of district resources even after their fee, which we negotiate very conservatively with them.
Okay, but what is their fee?
It's in the proposal.
I didn't, I didn't understand that. There was 12,000, and then there was 500. I didn't understand the numbers.
Do you know the letter? I'll look it up.
Yeah, I'll, it was number four.
A4.
A4. Let me see if I have. Energy for, yeah. Talked about annual energy saving value of 819,200 dollars. Net annual energy savings value, 670,340, and then it says ratio, ratio dollar saved for dollar fee. But I didn't see on this. Do you want mine?
Bear with me, I have a lot of backup here. In the backup that was sent to the members is the fee, and according to their most recent proposal, the net annual energy savings has actually increased to 670,340 dollars from the number I gave you a couple of years ago.
I can give you my letter.
It's 7100 dollars billed quarterly.
7100 billed quarterly?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm reading this correctly, yes.
I still don't see it on here, but I, that's fine. Thank you.
Stop, stop me afterwards, and I'll.
Well, I have the letter, I just couldn't figure it out. All right, thank you.
Mr. Russo?
First, I just wanted to say that it seemed like there was some misunderstanding by a member of the public. I never suggested clustering all the vice principals into one area, but I did go with Dr. Kozak. We visited the schools, and I did meet with all.
Is that on something on Mr. Gorsky's report?
Uh, no, but I just want to, I just want to clear it up because there was a comment that was made, which.
Can we do that under other board business?
Sure. Okay. 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 But I do have a question on this report as well.
Oh, okay. Question on the report.
So on the technology list, I see we're buying servers, and I'm just wondering, in a day and time when everybody's going to the cloud and getting rid of their servers, why are we buying them?
That goes to a technological sophistication that I can't answer. That was very thoroughly deliberated during the budget process and at the various committee meetings at the time, and I regret I can't give you an answer to that specifically. If you want to send me an email, I'll be happy to talk with Mr. Washington, our Technology Director, and give you a satisfactory answer tomorrow.
Has there ever been some, an expert or someone, consultant, who can look at the architecture that you have for your network and?
For technology?
Yeah.
We have a technology plan throughout the district, and everything that's being purchased is in accordance with the technology plan, and I certainly, after working with him for 18 years, would consider Mr. Washington an expert in that field.
But the network architect, network architect, he may be an expert on technology, but not in that area.
Again, that was during the budget process.
All right. Because there's substantial savings going in that direction, and I'm just surprised that, you know, we're buying servers. But, okay.
Any other comments or questions? Then we will have a roll call.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. De Mayo?
Yes, but I have to recuse myself from L, but I vote yes for everybody else.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes, I recuse, yes for everything, recuse on Patricia Lang, item L.
Thank you. Mr. Ryback?
I vote yes, except for L, or I need to recuse myself.
Noted. Mr. Russo?
Yes, except for you. I'll vote no.
Mr. Gorsky, could I correct? I need to recuse myself on L also. Just my name.
Noted, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Russo, you are a yes and a no on you, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rutzke?
So you got your pen ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. So I abstain with the exception of these following items. A, E, H, N as in Nancy, S as in Sam, V as in Victor, Y, Z as in zebra, double C and double K. And there I vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Koloponovich?
Yes, on everything except on letter L. I'm going to recuse on my name only.
So noted. Madam Board President, Board Action items A through double M has passed.
Oh, you forgot Mrs. De Mayo.
She skipped me.
I have a check mark there.
He means mine now.
I beg your pardon, that's the first time that's ever happened. Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Board President.
We've got talent on this board.
Beg your pardon, I guess it's lateness of the evening. Motion passes, thank you.
Okay. Board President's Report, and I'm going to try to be very quick. Now, it's the end of the school year, and there's so many events that we've been going through in all of our schools, so recently I had the opportunity to attend two of them. One was the annual Woodland Poetry Slam, and the second was the Kindergarten Tea at Oak Tree that I attended today. And I was amazed at the creativity of the students at Woodland because they wrote and acted out their own original poems. And I can't write a poem to save my life, and I was, they did an unbelievable job. And today, the little kindergarten students, they entertained their family and their friends, and I was very honored to be invited. And it's always nice when we get invited into the schools, because I think I've said this before, what we do here, we don't get to see in the classroom, so it's very important, or we're very happy and very excited when we do get that chance to see that. So I hope we do more, getting more invitations in the future. Last time, I also talked about the evaluation process, so I just want to give an update. Last week, the non-conflicted Board of Education members met at a special board meeting to discuss the evaluation of the superintendent. Since that time, a summary report has been written, and that is going to be shared with the board members this evening in closed session. And when we come to consensus, then I will have an opportunity to share that with Dr. Kozak. We will need to have one more special board meeting to conclude the whole evaluation, so I'm looking to see if we could set something up for next week, because we don't have much time left, and it needs to be done by the end of June. So I wanted to see if there's any dates that we could possibly get together next week. I know Wednesday is graduation, so I don't think we want to set one up then, but I know we have Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday are middle school graduations.
But they're over at four.
No, they start at four.
Right, so they start at four. So they, so they start at four, but we could do that after. We can always have it like at 6 o'clock or 6:30 or something. I don't think it would, it should take very long to do that. So would everybody be available on Tuesday night?
Tuesday?
I'm a no. Sorry.
Or the other option is Thursday.
What's the date, the 22nd? Thursday's the 22nd?
Yes.
Yeah.
I can't do that. I think I, I'm not available on the 22nd.
Well, then we will.
This is for the non-conflicted board members, right?
The non-conflicted board members. We could do it.
We're having a special, extra meeting for conflicted ones.
We could, we could.
Maybe you attend your own meeting.
Monday, we have a Monday graduation, two at 4 o'clock, the other half of the middle school, so we could always do it Monday evening if, if that's.
I can't do it Monday. I have a graduating middle schooler.
Okay, then we will try to set up a date tomorrow. We'll, we'll try to see what we can have, and.
Next week's going to be tough.
Yeah, I know. All right. Then that concludes my report, and then we will go to other Board of Education business. Mr. Ryback?
Yeah, I just, two fast things. I also was able to attend the Woodland Poetry Slam on May 25th, and was just amazed at the performances, but also they, they published a booklet of all their poems, and I thought that in itself was wonderful. So kudos to everyone, Mr. Lam, Mr. McLeod, all the teachers, staff, especially to the kids. They're fantastic. And on June 4th, as Dr. Kozak said, we attended a celebration hosted by the Indian community. If I'm, I hope I'm pronouncing it right, Guru Vandana, in Sanskrit, means reverence for the teacher, and it's thanking teachers for their knowledge and wisdom that they give students, and the event was culminated with a wonderful sharing of Indian food, which was delicious. It was a very wonderful celebration, a lot of work and effort went into it, and we certainly were appreciative, and I know the teachers, administrators there were equally as appreciative.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I bring up that point now?
Yes, you may.
So, because a member of the public mentioned something, and I think they misunderstood what I was saying. I didn't mean that we would consolidate all administrators into one area. As a matter of fact, I toured the school with Dr. Kozak and met with almost every vice principal in the high school. And strangely enough, after they got to listen to me, which the member from the public didn't get the opportunity to, they agreed, they actually agreed with what I was saying, and I was even surprised at how quickly they were, they were willing to look into it and cooperate with that. So it doesn't mean that anybody has to move, other than maybe some of the other administrators. In other words, when you spell out the requirements for the space you need, it's space, meaning the size of the space, the location, then you have your physical, operational, functional requirements that you put into your, let's say, your request. And then the plan is collect that information and see how they can best place the staff and put them in a common area, which can be shared. The idea is that office space is no longer owned by anybody, it's shared amongst a group. Now, you could make a case for certain individuals that may have designated offices, or shared with even other high-level officials. It can be broken down that way. But the location, because a lot of the discussions, items that would.
But the location, because a lot of the discussions, items that were brought up in the discussion, they're not documented, like vice principals provide a certain, let's say, concept of security, because they happen to be there, they, and they're on a certain floor in a certain area where the students are moving around, plus they're closer to the teachers in that area, so they can help them and so on. All those things put into their requirements, and then based on those requirements, you could create the flexible space, this type of environment where you can cluster them together. So, that's what, that's what we were discussing, and it seems like they were all eager to look into it, so. Because they did say that when they first moved into the high school, it was kind of overdone. The space they got was too big, they didn't need it, they didn't need that much space, and then over time, some space had been taken away. So, to avoid that problem going forward, I think we should address it early on.
Okay, I'm sure we will be looking into it as we move forward because nothing is set in stone yet.
Yeah, and if you, if you set up a committee to work with the architects on that, I would like to be a part of that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chiarella.
Yeah, I just, I have some other board business, so I wanted, I wanted to congratulate the student athletes also, and Mr. Jamal, who, he had to go, I'm sure he had homework in school tomorrow.
Study for an exam.
Yes. I do want to talk quickly about the Funding Committee. So, I was not, until you sent me that article this evening, I was not aware that there was a deal. Actually, over the last few days, I'd reached out to a number of people to try to figure out if there were, if there was any movement, and I couldn't get any, any headway anywhere, and that was disconcerting, considering that as of the eighth, the governor's challenge to the legislature to come up with a bipartisan plan to fund education and to fix the funding formula was up, so that was the deadline, and to hear, to have that met, have that deadline just arrive with silence bothered me. So, I, in my characteristic way, lashed out, you know, and sent letters to the editor, posted stuff on Facebook, and I was, I was nice, but I just, but I also was firm. Anyway, I just wanted to let everybody know what that article said, to give a little more detail. So, they're gonna, apparently Senator Sweeney and Assemblyman, Assembly Speaker Prado came together and have worked out a deal, there was some contention, I guess, between them prior, and there were a lot of things going on that I was hearing about the Assembly Speaker being replaced at Sweeney's request and things like that, so apparently they've worked something out. Where one hundred and forty-six million dollars will be earmarked for the, for the underfunded districts, and that could mean several million dollars for us if that's, if it's true, and if that does work out. And they talked about, in that article, lifting the growth cap and reallocating adjustment aid, so I think those will be good things if, if that actually happens. On the flip side, I think we still need to move forward with making sure that we have our insurance, you know, and that insurance is keeping, you know, having some steadfast resolve to move forward, even if our politicians let us down. And so, a few, a couple of meetings ago, the board gave us a vote of confidence, gave the Funding Committee a vote of confidence to move forward and look at the possibility of a lawsuit. I worked with a couple of, of the committee members to reach out to other districts. We reached out to about six hundred districts, so I have a list here of that, and the, and some of the, some of the things that we have. We've heard back from the Fields, I don't know why every town with the name Field in it responded, but no one else did. I'm, I was thinking like maybe there's some kind of, I'm getting some kind of message or something, but I can't figure it out, so like Chesterfield, Deerfield, you name it, if it has a field in it, they've responded to us.
Hammington, they don't have a field.
They don't have a field.
Hammington Field, right?
They didn't respond. So, I think, I think, you know, they, what every district basically said though was they're, they're still waiting, they're hopefully optimistic, but, but they were willing to look at alternatives once they knew for sure what was going on, so I think that's where we're at. I, I think that we may, you know, we may eventually have to look at seriously, you know, suing the state if they don't come to the table and with meaningful aid and relief, and as promised, meaningful relief before November. We were promised that in this room by our senator, by our assemblymen, that, that that would take place before November. I'm holding them to that. And so, as a, as a follow-up to that, we have a meeting of the Funding Committee on the twenty-eighth here at seven o'clock for, and it's open to the public for anyone that would like to attend. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Lang, hi.
Um, on, on May thirtieth, I attended a conference through the New Jersey School Boards Association on student achievement through different lenses, and I must say, it was probably one of the best conferences I've ever attended. They really talked about using social emotional learning to increase student achievement, and the connection between staff and students and how that improves student achievement, and talked about empowering the stakeholders, especially teachers and students, in part of the collaborative process of making decisions and bringing about change in the school district, and it tied right into something that here at the high school on June sixth was held, the Monroe Township High School Child Study Team and the school counselors presented an information session, which was incredibly moving and just wonderful, to raise awareness about teen mental health issues, which came up again tonight, and it was, it was, it was the brainchild of the counselors and the child study team. They went to Michelle Cretelli and Ms. Hines and Mr. Goodall and said, "We want to do this," and they did it, and it was a very wonderful, open conversation between parents, and we gave feedback. I went as a parent, you know, always concerned about doing the best for my children as well as others, and they gave us great information, and they're going to be planning on doing sessions like that throughout next, the next school year. So, I think it's a wonderful thing that we, we had that opportunity, and I, I think they should really be commended for what, the work that they did.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we're, we're back to public forum, so anyone wishing to speak to anything, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and we're going to adhere to the four-minute, no stoppage policy.
Prakash Parab, thirty-three Denner Drive. I'm happy that we are going to learn something tomorrow about funding from the state, but the elections are coming, we have to put a pressure. You know, I have heard equalization aid, you know, how twenty-three million dollar other district gets and we get zero. So, we have to put pressure, and we have, I'm going to, I'm going to talk to different communities, and the pressure is on, who is going to be our governor, who are going to stand for election from council level, Board of Education, and up. So, last time, I had a question about performance academic ranking of our school, so I'm following up, what is the academic ranking of our school when factors include scores of SAT, ACT, state test, number of students in AP courses, and rate of graduation? And how is the competitive performance for our last three years on this? Second one is, how is our school district ranked in NICH in last three years? Because NICH looks like not only academia, overall performance of the school. So, I'd like to have your comments and any opportunities as we move forward.
Do you have that information?
Yes.
Thank you, Doctor. The academic ranking is, when we consider the SAT, or ACT and state test, the number of AP courses and graduation, it's, it's hard to compare us using some of the outside rankings, like NICH or other ones, because they each have their own way that they rank districts, and I'm going to speak about NICH in a minute. But overall, our scores have been going up, which I'm very happy to report. The, the SAT scores in particular, our average scores have been going up above the state average this year, our average is reading five eleven, not this year, but the previous year, five thirty-seven and five twelve, and that is above the state average, which this district had been below. The NICH rankings, two-year, and for twenty sixteen, we were rated as eighty-sixth in the state. Twenty seventeen, we moved up to sixty. I couldn't find the twenty fifteen, because NICH doesn't, I guess they don't archive it, so I searched and searched, but I couldn't find it, but it is, I'm very proud and very happy to note that we've moved up twenty-six spaces, according to their rankings, and I feel that the presentations that Dr. Alvik has done with our state test scores, and we won't know that for this year until probably late August or September, has shown considerable growth in, in all of the tested areas. We're also looking at our own internal type, like our MAP tests as a measure of academic performance, that assessment, which is in grades three through eight, and the end-of-the-year assessments are coming in, so I know I looked at it mid-year, and I saw considerable growth across the grades three to eight, but I really need to look and analyze the final grades once all that data is in, and I'll be reporting that to the board. So, I feel that there's, there's many different ways that we measure growth, but academically, from all the different measurements that we have, across the board, I feel like we're making considerable progress in that area, and I attribute that to the hard work of our teachers, I attribute that to the hard work of Dr. Alvik, of course, certainly our principals, our supervisors, and we really have focused on, on the use of data. You know, this year and last year, we've really made a concerted effort to use data to inform our instruction, and just as a side note, I was stopped into one of our AP chemistry classes today, but on the way, I ran into one of our physics teachers, and she was telling me a story, I don't want to get too much into the personal information, but it was basically the use of data analytics. She showed me charts for a business outside of school that was just incredible, how you can measure every step of the way and how important that is to run a business, small business. Well, that same type of data analytics is very, very important, that we use that in the school district to measure are our interventions effective? How do we know? What can we do better? So, it's not always a question of more testing, but it's a question of taking the data that we have and making better use of it, and that's something that, that I would like to continue to see this district do, to really find a way to measure everything that we're doing to make sure that we're being as effective as we possibly can, because we want the best for our students. We have very good students, and we have very good parents, and I think the expectations are high from our parents, and I want to make sure that we meet or exceed their expectations.
Thank you, Dr. Kozak and board members. I'm really proud that we have gone up, you know, from-
Dr. Prakash, your time is up.
Yeah, eighty-six to sixty, so I'm very proud of that, I'm proud of all of y'all, and I'm also, Jill talked about STEM, that is, and other programs, we are very proud of that, please continue, okay? Thank you very much.
It's Christine Lester, two sixty-one Kramer-Haffaker Road. I didn't see this on the agenda, but I just want to bring it to the attention that we lost a teacher, Mrs. Fenari from Applegarth, and I think her loss should be acknowledged. I was really disappointed in the district's handling of her passing, as it was just announced just via Applegarth School as an alert now, and I know other students in the other buildings were told, in some buildings, like I know the high school, they weren't informed, but the middle school was told, but there was no communication from the administration that she had passed, so a lot of us parents just took it as rumor because we were waiting for some acknowledgement. I did email the board and Dr. Kozak, and there was no communication or anything sent out from the board or the district until a week after her passing. I did attend the funeral, and it was very disheartening to go at night with her peers and her colleagues and family to say, "Where are the kids? Where are the parents?" I know Dr. Kozak's response is, he didn't think that it affected a lot of people, but it did. There were kids crying on the buses, there, I had to, you know, I worked book fair with her students in her class, I didn't even know how to refer to them. If we want to retain our teachers, we have to treat them better, and we have to acknowledge their passing. She was a nationally recognized teacher and Teacher of the Year. If she worked here for a week, we have to acknowledge their passing. Her kids were grieving, and there was no acknowledgement. The only thing that was sent was one Facebook message a week after. I get calls every single day from Mr. Breyer from the Athletic Department, "And my child can't play sports." I would not be offended if you sent out a blast, an email, a Facebook, whatever, however you would have done it, or even if every school then sent out a blast, but we want to retain these teachers, and right now, they feel like it doesn't matter if they pass, that their time with our district is not important, and it is. Her life mattered, and I think her family was expecting more people to come and acknowledge. They couldn't even send a condolence on her Facebook page or anything because nobody knew until a week after her passing. So, I would just hope in the future that things like this unfortunately are going to arise, that we handle it better. So, she was a great teacher, and I just want to acknowledge her because it wasn't on anything, but thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I would like to respond. I appreciate that feedback. I, I want you to know that, that she was a great teacher and a great person, and I did attend the viewing and speak to the family, and I spoke to, you know, her husband and the, you know, her children and people there, and expressed that. I did, I knew the history, I did consult when, I mean, I had been following her battle over the course of a year and a half, two years, speaking closely with Mr. Vitolo in particular, and visiting her classroom and, and following all that, not knowing the history as far as her presence in other schools, I did consult about where she had taught and where she had worked. Looking back in hindsight, twenty twenty, maybe something after the entire district, but the initial information I received was that it was, it was primarily Applegarth School and the middle school, which is where we put the notices out.
I didn't receive anything from the middle school, just stuff like that.
Okay, but, but again, I, you know, the last thing I want to do, I mean, if you saw tonight the way we honor our retirees, our Teacher of the Year, our educational staff, our, our support staff, many different people, my visits to the classroom, the very last thing we want to do, that I want to do, is ever to not show full respect to our teachers, our professionals, our custodians, our bus drivers, you name it. I, I make it a point to get out there and say hello to people and talk to them, and a lot of staff have commented about that. I have the utmost regard and respect for, for our staff. Again, hindsight's twenty twenty, listening to your comments, I thought, you know, that you were right. That should have been something, a whole district-wide announcement, and, but it wasn't for lack of, it wasn't apathy on my part.
Right, in my email, I-
So, I appreciate your, your feedback.
They give you a heads up, because some people didn't know because she was out on leave for a while.
Thanks, thank you.
Certainly, certainly, I understand, thank you.
Corey Masters, and I'm Michaela Court. I just want to take a minute to congratulate Mrs. Schmetterer and Mr. Capes for the awards that they received when we were at Tony Park. The band had come in third, and the Falcon Jazz Band, I think, came in second in there, and the chorus came in second place, or, yes, second place, only to be beaten by our chamber choir, which came in first place. So, I know sometimes, you know, we don't always acknowledge the band and the chorus at the Board of Ed meeting, so I just want to take a second and tell them, it was great to see, and it was, it was really, it was a long day, but the kids all had a good time, and it was actually not as nearly as stressful as, you know, we were all anticipating it's going to be, so it was a great day. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak? Then at this time, public forum is closed, and we will go to the closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter two, three, one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five and JSA ten, colon, four dash six through ten, colon, four dash twenty-one, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, intimidation, and bullying, superintendents evaluation. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as a need for confidentiality no longer exists. We need a motion in a second?
I'll motion that.
Oh, Mr. Rutske. Oh, Mrs. Lang. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then at this time, we will move into closed session. Okay, seeing no one in the audience for a public forum, our next of Board of, scheduled Board of Education meeting is July nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, seven o'clock PM at the Monroe Township High School. Motion to adjourn. Second. Mr. Chiarella.
Give it to Jill.
Mrs. De Mayo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.